To find out who wrote, and usually they get those in the packet, but there was no packet for the, that I could find for the Board of Selectmen meeting, maybe they were in there, I don't know. I'd like to get an answer for that. I'd like to get a report on historic preservation, what staff is doing relative to the Acton 2020 goals and historic preservation, because I continually get effort letters every single day about the 40B manual doesn't mention the historic, it doesn't respect the state historic law, the 184 Main Street, it goes on and on, and I'd like to understand what staff is doing. And then I have a question relative to the tree clearing by law again. If a group gets together, which it looks like there is going to be a group, what's the first step to, I guess, we can go do a petition, but if we're going to work with town staff or town hall, what the first step would be?
I assume, I was wondering which of the issues was the issue you wanted to raise, and apparently you have a laundry list of issues, but you mentioned lots of town cars, you mentioned library surveillance, you mentioned tree bylaw, you mentioned historic preservation, now you're asking a question about tree bylaw and how citizens come together. Well, I think that you probably need to, the citizens need to get organized, and presumably some citizens actually have the ability to do a little bit of work and research before approaching the Board of Selectmen, okay? You don't just go to town staff and kind of unload it on town staff, that's what we do. But you, you know, you have to pull it together, and that's pretty easy for people to do because you have a model to follow, and that's the Town of Concord's bylaw, which, if you're like me, you've already read it, and you can start to hunt around and see whether there are other options, alternative models to consider. But I think that it would be very helpful for the town if people are interested in that, if you have fleshed it out a little bit, and before, have an idea of what you think is good and what is bad, and then indicate your willingness to work on it. Because it didn't make our top, it didn't make our top, top final goals, it doesn't mean that at some point it won't get worked on, but it's not officially a high priority.
So I just want to understand, because in the past, we would go to town staff first, so you're saying bring people to the Board of Selectmen and get us on the agenda, or how would we get on the agenda?
You, you ask. You say you have a group, you want to talk, but you have to obviously organize and, and talk about what it is in substance you want to do, and then you ask to get on agenda, then you talk about it.
Okay, thanks. Does any, can I ask if any of the selectmen would like to be a contact for that?
Tara, I'm willing to be a contact.
Okay, thanks very much. And then the historic preservation, I'd like very much to get a report on what staff is doing at some point, because it seems to go through the whole year, sort of waiting for something to happen, and we've met with Steve a couple of times, groups, and a lot of times it comes back to that the selectmen have to do something, and so I'd like very much to have a regular report every year on this very important Acton 2020 goal.
Well, I don't have an update right now, and I don't know what the, we have not, we've talked on and off about historic preservation, but I don't know that we've actually taken a position lately about what we're going to do about historic preservation, and I assume you're talking about houses that get demolished.
Yes, staff facilitating that. And my last question is a gas leak by law, that was also a, it was mentioned, but it didn't get onto the preservation list, excuse me, the high priority list, and then after the meeting, I had asked a little bit, like, does that include, you know, was that included in the things like reducing carbon footprint, which was the longer term goal, maybe between preservations and that too? So maybe I, it's possible, since we only have one through five, you guys are only allowed to vote on five according to the process that's dictated, but I hope that in the future you allow one through 10, and so some of these other things can bubble up. But maybe I'm asking if you can have a discussion of what's included in that sustainability plan and the reducing carbon footprint, because it's really big.
That is, that is a new goal, Tara, and honestly, we haven't even had a substantial discussion about it, it is likely to be on a future agenda, so I can't read a crystal ball and tell you what it consists of, because we haven't had a discussion about it, that's why it's a goal, and, and the gas by law also is something that has been a subject of discussion, I know Katie is working with some people in Green Act and to move that along, we've already expressed interest in that, so I assume that it's going to be moving along, whether or not it is on the final, among the final goals for 2017.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anybody else, briefly?
Extremely briefly, Shirley Ernst in Hosmer Street. There seems to be some confusion and a lack of understanding about when the new senior center will open. It may sound trivial, but there are a lot of people whose expectations have been set, and they're curious as to when the, if there is a plan as to when the senior center will open.
No, no, I think it's a very good question, I don't know myself, Mr. Manager, perhaps you can help us.
Well, it'll be sometime this summer, we're really gearing probably later July, early August, really, a lot of it relates to getting the kitchen done, which has had some, some issues in it, but.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Shirley. Nobody else, okay. Quickly, I'm going to go through chairman's update, and then the town manager has an update. The flags were at half-staff today in the town in memory of Betty McManus, who died last Tuesday, and that just reminded me that our board needs to develop a policy on local standards, as in contrast to the governor ordered occasions when the flags are set at half-staff. Visiting hours were yesterday, the funeral home was jammed, the funeral was this morning. Betty was a 49-year resident and staunch proponent of affordable housing, for which she received much recognition, she became the first executive director of the Acton Housing Authority in 1978, and served in that position for 26 years, she started up the Acton Community Housing Corporation with Nancy Tavernier, and for over 20 years she was president of the Daliotamian Campership Fund, which provides camp scholarships for children whose families otherwise wouldn't be able to send them to summer camp. At the Arboretum on Wednesday, the 21st, at 5:00, Board of Selectmen members are welcome to join Bettina Abbe and proponents of the proposed China Garden section of the Arboretum for just a tour of the proposed site. Wednesday, the same day, at 7:30, in the Public Safety Facility, will be a public info session about 184 Main Street, which is a Chapter 40B project consisting of eight units. Thursday, June 22nd, 6:15, at Nara's Classical Concert featuring A Far Cry, which is a self-conducted classical group that is in residence at the Gardner Museum. Monday, June 26th, at 7:30, in this room, there will be a public information session with a presentation of updated plans for public comment about the Kelly's Corner Infrastructure Improvement Project. Wednesday, June 28th, at 7:00, this room again, there will be a public forum on the potential uses of the property at 348-364 Main, which includes Kennedy Landscaping and the adjacent property. Thursday, June 29th, there at 10:00 in this room, the magic, I'm not going to spell out the acronym, Stormwater Partnership will be having a presentation and discussion about tools to assist towns in complying with the federal stormwater management standards. The 4th of July in Acton will be celebrated on Saturday, July 1st, between 3:00 and 9:30 PM at Nara, and there will be shuttles, as usual, running between Nagog Park Drive and Nara. And the only other item I would mention is that settlement discussions continue with regard to the Nagog Pond Treatment Plant Project and our decision, which Concord has appealed, pretty much we're meeting every week. So, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, I, I think I reported the last meeting, it might have been the meeting before, that the Department of Public Utilities finally had approved our electric aggregation plan, and that being said, our consultant, Peregrine Energy, opened, opened bids for electric aggregation last Tuesday, we had seven entities bid, and we asked for prices ranging from 12 months, 15 months, 16 months, and 24 months. We have awarded the aggregation contract to Dynergy Corporation at a rate of 10.720 cents per kilowatt hour for a 24-month contract, and it includes a 5% mass Class 1 Rex. The, the, the national, or, excuse me, the, the Eversource rate that will be going into effect July 1 is 10.759 cents, so we actually have got a cheaper rate with some green, with a green component. Also, we're offering a 100% green product with 100% Massachusetts Class 1 Rex, it'll be about 12.7 cents a kilowatt hour. So the next phase, the game plan is really to initiate the, the aggregation probably late September, early October, as you recall, with, with presentations we had from Peregrine Energy, one of their responsibilities will be to do community outreach, we'll be doing a lot of information mailers, television, probably public forums, and also having some documents with information translated into some of the common languages that are used in the town, so there's a lot of work now to get it out, because technically, people need to opt out if they want to stay with Eversource. If they do nothing, they will get the, the 10.759 rate, or they can opt in for the greener, the greener product, so it'll be a lot more information coming out in the very near future through, through our consultant. Secondly, I just wanted to let, let the board know that I think for the second year in a row, the town has received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for our comprehensive annual financial report called a CAFER, or as the finance director likes to say, an audit on steroids. So it is, it is a lot of work to do the CAFER, and a lot of folks worked hard for it, and you know, something we should be very proud of, and that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, the, the little flurry of activity is, because I don't have the, the notice that I have to read for the hearing that actually is supposed to start at 7:10, so apparently it wasn't in my materials, so there will be a little bit delay, of a delay, but in the meantime, it's 533 Main Street, okay, thank you. The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on June 19, 2017, at 7:10 PM, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204, at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street. Acton on the application of AHO Development Corp. for a site plan, special permit 5/4/17-467 under zoning by law section 10.4, at 533 Main Street Acton, the applicant proposes to expand the existing building, the application and accompanying plans can be inspected at the Planning Department and Town Hall during normal business hours, so you both are here. I, I don't know if you'd rather, you could sit there, or you can stand at this mic, you have a choice of microphones, depending on what your presentation consists of.
[inaudible]
Oh, don't leave it to me, I, yeah, it's, I guess you, you really, I know that it's very, it looks as if it's impossible for you to make that map plan visible to us and to the people in the audience, so unfortunately, people in the audience, they're going to have to focus on making sure we can see the plan.
Okay, I can set up, back here?
Yep, that's, that's fine, whatever works for you, it's a fairly straightforward matter, that'd be great, and Joan is, Joan Gardner is the assigned selectman, so I assume, Joan, you're prepared to, I don't know, introduce the, the project, or maybe introduce them to introduce the project?
This is for, this site plan is for storage, and they'll be erecting additional buildings around the site for the storage capacity.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think that's fine, and I think, gentlemen, if you want to just explain, push the button on the base to make sure the light's on.
Yep, okay. So I'm William Hall with Stamps Game McNary, and this is a site plan for 533 Main Street, and as Joan said, it's for storage units and the addition of buildings to the site, as well as in addition to the front of the existing building in that location. We got a chance to read through all of the comments that were provided to us, and nothing really jumped out at us too much, it seems like we should be able to address everything, there's no major comments. A couple of comments we would like to discuss, well, you know, first let me give you an overview here, like I said, these buildings in the darker tan color are all additional buildings, and this is the existing building. So we're adding pavement around the site to provide circulation, and it's just additional storage units. So the comments we would like to address in the Design Review Board memo, which we had just received today, there were two things in particular, we appreciate all the comments on this, and we're going to do our best to, to address all of these comments. Sven was the architect on this, and he actually attended the meeting, and they're recommending that we eliminate Building 7. We believe that in addition to eliminating Building 7 and donating to the sidewalk fund, that this would be a financial burden, so we would prefer to keep Building 7 in there if we could, and if they would like more landscaping around it to have it blend into the surrounding more, we'd certainly provide that.
Could you, could you just point out the numbers of the buildings?
Oh, yes, sorry.
Because we don't know which ones are what.
This is Building 7.
And then what about the, are the other ones numbered as well?
Yes.
This is number 2, 3, this is 6, 5, 4, Building 1, and then over here, we have 8, 9, 10.
Okay.
So Building 7 is the smallest one in the front. And also, Sven could probably speak to this a little bit more, because he was at the meeting, but we were under the impression that the buildings 2 and 3, which is the long building in the front, it was recommended that we provide jogs or provide a break in the building, the memo was stating to do both, but Sven could speak to that a little bit more.
Yeah, sure. We had, we had a pretty productive meeting with the Design Review Board, they were very receptive, it made some good suggestions, I think, that we're trying to incorporate. Their two, their big concern was about that currently big, long wall that faces Post Office Square, when you come up there, there's a retention pond that's necessary on that side, so they were worried that was kind of too long and too blank, which is, which is totally understandable, so we, we talked about different options, one option was to break the building and see between, and the other option is to put recessed areas on the backside there and put some trees in to visually create three separate smaller walls rather than one big long wall, so we're perfectly fine with doing that, and be happy to provide that. They also had a concern verbally at the meeting about colors, and would be happy to go with a darker earth tone color, that's totally fine, that's a good, good suggestion. They did have the suggestion about Building 7, or one person in particular kind of didn't like that building in the front, thought it kind of blocked the main building there. We are, we would be open to moving the building, but unfortunately, we kind of have a tight site and don't have a lot of other options on where to put it, so if it's possible to put some landscaping around it, that would be preferable. Thank you.
Anything else to add to?
Yes, so.
You said, you had another set of comments that you had, or maybe it was all DRB's comments?
No, no, just regarding the donation to the sidewalk fund, we would, we would like to see if we could get a reduction in the amount of the donation, I know that has been provided in the past for other sites where there were sidewalks along the frontage, so we would like to see if we could get a reduction to that amount.
Okay, it's, it's usually, it's usually a standard, standard calculation based on linear footage, but, well, we, obviously the board can talk about that.
And that was, that was all, we could satisfy the rest of the comments in here, so if anything jumped out to any of you, or if you have any questions, then we'd be happy to answer those.
Okay, questions, comments from the board? Joan, do you have anything?
Yeah, I can't tell.
You have to turn on the mic.
I'm going to get used to that. I can't tell from here, I've driven around the site, can you go all around now?
Yes, yes, you can.
We maintain that also, yeah.
Can you just talk a little bit about what kind of landscaping you would provide in front of Building 7, and also how that would tie in with the landscaping that you would do in Buildings 2 and 3, just to make sure it doesn't look odd that there's extra landscaping in one part and, and not the other, and what kind of trees or shrubs or things are you, are you talking about?
Sure, so we did not generate the landscaping plan, so a lot of that's to be determined, however, there would be landscaping proposed in, as Sven was talking about, putting jogs in the building, there'd be landscaping proposed actually in the jogs there, and then whatever would be satisfactory to the town for landscaping around 7.
Most, most of the landscaping revolves around this area here, there's a retention pond here needed for the drainage, so there'd be landscaping all around, including trees and shrubs, and then in the back of this building, we would be putting indents to put two bigger trees, to kind of create a breakup here, so you don't see one big long wall.
Okay.
The rest of the site is not clearly visible from the street, really, it's through, there's a heavily wooded tree area here, and when you come in, you're just be coming around, we'd be, you know, grassing the areas that are not building, but the main concern was on the front, and we would be putting the trees here, this sets up, it kind of sits up a little higher, there's a rock outcropping here, so really on the side, and this corner is probably where some shrubs or evergreen trees would be best planted here to kind of blend that building in.
Okay, and then just for the audience, in case people hadn't read the staff comments, some of the ones that you're going to address involve widening some of the roads per the fire department, and then also the, including bicycle parking, which is required, and then again, I, you know, I think we understand the sidewalk front, but there's no sidewalk currently in your side of the road, correct?
Correct.
It's on the opposite side of the street.
Yeah, so that's generally why we ask for the donation in lieu of building an actual sidewalk there, and as Janet noted, it, it is a pretty standard calculation that we use, so it's hard to then kind of reduce it on the spot for folks when we don't, when we have sort of a, a set standard, but appreciate your concerns.
Our thinking on the sidewalk was it's, you have one on the opposite side, and it's not a heavily pedestrian street, we could go ahead and build one on this side, which would, wouldn't be overly burdensome from a financial perspective, but it would be, it seems kind of silly to spend the money doing that when you could make a donation and maybe make a bigger impact somewhere else, so that was the thinking for that.
Yeah, that's why we generally ask for the donation instead of the sidewalk, I mean, if you came, other developers have come to us and said it would, what it would cost them to build the sidewalk, because we know it's cheaper than the, what, what we use to calculate, just because we use prevailing range, so if you came to us and perhaps said what it would cost, that might be a consideration then, because I think both of us would rather not see another sidewalk there, but, but a donation, so.
So I believe a rough number of, of what we thought it would cost would be around $8,000 to build a sidewalk down the frontage there?
What was the requested amount in the, maybe Kristen, do you have it, I don't have the work in front of me.
It was just over 33,000.
33,000, okay, that seems like a pretty big difference.
It's $50 in linear foot.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if it was.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Peter, Shinkson, any?
The only, the only question that I had was related to the water main, so if you could, if you could deal with that, or, you know, say how you would address that.
Yes, so I put a call into the Water District this afternoon, and I wasn't able to get in touch with Chris Allen, but we will satisfy their comment if it involves routing the water main around the building, or if we could leave it until there's, until something needs to be fixed and then reroute it around, the applicant and the owner would take responsibility to do anything required that the Water District would like to see, so we will address their comments and make sure they're satisfied with the project.
Anything else? Okay, where's Building 10? I, I don't remember if that's the one you pointed out to me, or if that's a different one, okay, because that's the one under which the, the main would, is located that there, Chris, yeah, the Water District is concerned about, okay, so you're saying that you would be able to shift the position of the building, or?
So for now, it's preferred to leave the water main going underneath the building, and if they ran into it during construction and had to relocate it, or if for some reason there was maintenance that needed to be done on the water main, then at that point in time, we could reroute the water main, but the applicant would prefer not to spend that money to fix something that can work in the meantime.
Right, but you're, you're trying to start a discussion with the Water District about that issue, right?
Yes, correct.
Because that, I think that, that's important, so I think that if we were to, if we were to make a decision, we would probably want to condition everything on, on some sort of agreement between you and the Water District about what you're going to do in that area, so.
Yeah, that's no issue.
Okay. Peter, you don't have any questions? Okay, I, I just have a question about, I know there are no groundwater zones, that there's nothing affecting Groundwater Zone 2, but I couldn't tell from the maps that were in our packet where the, the zones are, I, I don't know if you had them marked out somewhere roughly.
So if I recall correctly, the zone is, it's actually off the main portion of the site, if I recall correctly?
Down near the septic, down near the floor.
Yeah, it's down.
The interesting part about this site is it has a very remote septic system, it's about 1,000 feet down around the other lot, the pressure system goes here and then down around the corner, and down at the tail end of that little nip that's down there is where that other zone is.
So it's the, it's the septic system that is off-site, and that it's near, okay, it's near, okay, so that's existing.
The septic system is on the property, but it's an unusual shape, because it's a narrow strip that runs about 800 feet down around the next lot to the septic area, so.
That, we have a few of those setups in town, and just very bizarre, yeah.
So it's quite a distance, actually, from the, any developable area.
Okay, okay. And you've already talked about, I think, oh, I had a question about the existing building, what is the, you're proposing, it looks as if there's already a sign on the building that says it's for storage, I don't know if that's what it's been used for, I drive by there all the time, you know, the post office, and I, today was the first time I actually took a look at the building and saw the sign, so I don't know if that's you, or if it's the, yeah, if that's you, you've already got, are you going to use it all for storage, the existing building, or are there facilities in there that use plumbing, and are you going to have offices in there?
That's a good question, and we apologize for not introducing that as part of the introduction, this, this project really is two parts, there's an existing building there that was used for a long time by a testing company, a government testing company that broke and, broke things in there for, for the government, it's been little used for quite a while, so we have taken out the inside of the building and permitted that as a separate thing, just the inside, the structure, and are rebuilding that as a self-storage facility inside, climate-controlled facility inside. These new buildings that you see on the outside are traditional drive-up exterior non-conditioned space, so we have a two-part use there, but it is all self-storage, there'd be one person basically working at the building, staff in it with relatively limited hours, so it'd be, there'd be, there's a male and female bathroom, but only one employee, so it'd be a two-part inside/outside storage.
So you will have plumbing, I mean, it's not as if you're going to, because you're going to have some people on, on site, okay.
Yes, yes, limited, but yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, questions from the audience?
Hi, Barry Rosen, do we know, I can't tell from looking at that, or from the packets that were sent out, what is the total number of square feet that is going to be disturbed? Looks to me like it's greater than 5,000.
Yes, so I'm assuming you're getting towards a stormwater management report?
Chapter X and chapter U both kick in here.
Yes, and so we have addressed that with our stormwater management report here, that was submitted as part of the application package.
It, it didn't look to me like you were going to be able to keep all the impervious surface on the, within the, within the plan.
So.
I did some, I ran some quick calculations, it looked like it's going to be pretty tough to do that.
Yes, so this is partially redevelopment, because there's already a large amount of existing impervious on the site, as well as a large building.
But you're adding greater than an additional 5,000.
Correct, and we are.
And you have to keep that additional 5,000 on the building site.
Correct, we are, we are providing a large stormwater basin on the front, frontage for Post Office Square, and we're also providing an infiltration trench down in the northern corner of the lot, and also roof dry, dry wells for individual buildings, so we are controlling the stormwater runoff, and we have the calculations that we submitted to back that up.
Okay.
Tara Fredericks, West Action, I'm having a hard time oriented, is there, there's no new curb cut? Okay. And just, because I'm studying tree. And just because I'm studying trees, uh, how many mature trees are going to be cut and mature per the lots that are being passed around here, are it six inches and above?
Uh, we don't have an exact number on the amount of trees, but the site is, uh, a lot of it's already disturbed and we're working within a lot of existing disturbance. The largest amount of trees to be cut would be along the frontage of post office square, where we're going to be putting a basin because we need to cut the trees in that area. And then behind buildings eight and ten, there's going to be some disturbance through there. But if I recall correctly, it's largely just, um, pine trees through that area, there's not many large hardwoods through there. But we don't have an exact number on that.
Can any of this be seen by Isaac Davis Trail? Because if it is, then it's due a 106 review, um, by, I'm not sure who, the Historic Commission, I believe, Katie would probably know, yeah?
Yeah, it would, if it is, I don't know if it is, would have to go to Mass Historic.
Um, I don't believe that it is because the Isaac Davis Trail is a lot further downhill. This is very far up and there is quite a buffer. Um, there's more than sixty feet along where, uh, the Isaac Davis Trail is that's not to be disturbed, so you'd still have that large buffer there.
Um, I have, uh, one comment, two comments. Uh, first of all, I want to honor the people that were in the building before because they did a lot of work, um, helping us send, uh, pallets and pallets of equipment, uh, computers and, and tools and paint and anything else we can gather up around here to Hurricane Katrina survivors. So we thank you for that. And then, uh, sidewalk contribution, I think we need that money. Uh, with all due respect, um, I think that we put those numbers in place so that we would have a consistent, um, process for determining how much for people to pay. And I feel like when we start caving, once we start caving everywhere, it becomes more of an arbitrary and capricious discount on something that, uh, is very straightforward. Thank you. Um, also, just, oh, just one more comment that, yes, the sidewalk there was, is not used very often. Um, and this was a big battle that we had some years ago, saying that we didn't need the sidewalk there, we needed it in places like Maple Street, et cetera. So I think we should hold firm on the sidewalk fund, thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the audience?
I just had another question. The detention basins, are they going to be dried?
Yes, so the detention basin will have to empty itself within seventy-two hours and we provided that calculation as well.
Okay, so the, the soil, the soil testing in that, in that area should be able to empty it in the three days or four days?
Yes, yeah, it actually should empty much faster, it's very sandy, gravity.
Sandy underneath?
Yes, very much.
It is, okay, thanks.
Anyone else in the audience? All right, board, what do you want to do? You want to talk or before? Peter, you have a question?
Well, Joan is, Joan is a liaison or, so if you want to say something first, that's fine.
What, I can't see what she was saying because you were talking, Peter. What would you like, Joan?
I would move that we take it, take it under advisement.
Take what?
Take the decision and bring the.
Usually what we do is decide whether or not we want to close the hearing tonight. And when we close the hearing, that means we would take no further comments, um, from the, from anybody in the public. And then we would give, um, direction to the planning department, Kristen being here tonight, about any conditions or things that we would want put in. Um, and then they would bring that back for us to vote at our next meeting. So I think the question is whether or not we want to close it tonight. And then there's probably a couple outstanding questions in terms of conditions to put on there.
Peter, you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to, uh, recommend that we, uh, actually continue this hearing. That it seems to me the conditions are beyond what we would normally allow to get added after we make a decision in the planning department to approve, um, the final plans. But I'm concerned about the water district issue, the, the main under the building. I'm concerned about, and I understand that you've got these comments recently, but I, I'm concerned about the design review board. I don't know how we condition them going back to the design review board and, uh, responding to their comments. And I'm concerned about the sidewalk. I mean, we, we've had this issue before. We, the contribution is fifty dollars a square foot, which it costs, or, uh, fifty dollars a linear foot, which it cost the town to build sidewalks. Um, as the gentleman, and actually, I'm not sure, did your name get into the record? I don't know if your associate mentioned your name, but can you just state your name and make sure we're on the record?
Of course, our Sven heisted.
Okay, um, the gentleman Sven pointed out, um, he could build the sidewalk, which would be essentially a sidewalk to nowhere on this side of, of post office road. And there's a sidewalk already on the other side. So we don't have, we don't have any control. If he just wants to say, I don't want to spend the thirty-three thousand dollars, I'll just build my own sidewalk, which we don't need, um, he has the option of doing that. We can't require a contribution if they actually build the sidewalk. So, uh, I would like to see the number that they're proposing, uh, with, you know, some justification for a linear foot for a private party to build the sidewalk. Um, so though, for those reasons, I'm suggesting we consider continuing it rather than closing the hearing tonight, but.
And if we continue it, I mean, we need to provide, you know, we need to clarify what it is that we're looking, additional information we're looking for. But there.
Katie, I'd agree with Peter and I think it would be helpful if you came back with a plan that showed a landscape plan, particularly around buildings and the changes you proposed to buildings two and three and landscaping to kind of, um, you know, block, um, the view of, of building seven. Um, and then as well as, as Peter said, the justification, a specific number for your, um, suggested contribution to the sidewalk fund, so we can talk about that. And then, you know, hopefully you'd have time to, to update the plans to just reflect the, the other staff comments that it seemed that you were fine, you know, addressing. But I think, I agree, I think it's, there were enough that it's worthwhile, um, to, to continue.
Yeah, I think, I think certainly the water district issue, because you, you haven't, haven't really had a chance to have a discussion, I think it would be helpful for you as well to get that cleared out. And before we actually close the hearing and, and make our decision, so.
Can I just speak to the water issue for one second, maybe it'll resolve it? Uh, we're not necessarily opposed to moving the water. If they insist that they'd like the water rerouted around the building, so it's not underneath, we'd be happy to do that. It just seems like we're spending money to solve a problem that we don't have yet. And it is water lane on private property, if it breaks, it's our responsibility to fix it anyway. So the logic was if it breaks, we'll fix it, but if it's not broken, don't fix it. Um, if the water department insists they want to move, then we'll move it. Uh, we, we have to do something with them, they have, we have to satisfy them one way or another. So if, if they insist on it being moved, we can move it. We were just trying to use the logic that, you know, it doesn't need to be done now, so don't, don't fix it if it's not broken, that's all.
Yeah, I think, well, I think that my colleagues, at least two of my colleagues have weighed in on the idea that we continue it. And I think, uh, in the interest of just having a cleaner, cleaner decision-making process, I think it's a good idea, um, just so that they, because otherwise, I think there's going to be some reluctance to, to close the hearing and to, to have, to make a decision tonight, so. It's not, it's not a complicated project, so it's not as if, uh, you're, you're going to have an owner's task to collect information. I think we've already pretty well established what the information is that people want here. But, you know, the sidewalk, the water district conversation. And, and I guess to some extent it would be helpful to have some clarification, because we don't have any of the, the elevations showing what the, you were planning to do in response to the DRB. Because we just see from the bird's eye view, I guess, of the buildings. If you have time, I mean, I also realize that that doing, redoing plans is money, so, um, I'm not going to push on that, so.
We do, I do have a plan that shows most of what, or the, the solution we have here with the, uh, indent to the building in response to the design review board. So I can pass that around if you wanted to see that. But it basically breaks this big long building into three pieces and puts a nice mature evergreen tree, you know, at the break. So that was the main, uh, solution we were trying to find there.
Okay, no, that's, it, that's, that's good enough for me, I don't know about my colleagues, but, um, does somebody want to make a motion? And do we have time, when would we have an opening?
Do you have a date, Lisa?
Do we have any openings for, on when?
July tenth.
Yeah, is there time?
Does that, are you guys available, July tenth?
It would be, our next meeting, meeting is July tenth and? Seven thirty.
Yeah, I think we could do that. One quick administrative question, are you planning to close the meeting and then have us come back with the items or are you planning to handle that?
Yeah, no, we, we won't close it because we need the extra information. We don't cle, we don't close the hearing until we have all the information, we need to decide.
Because otherwise we can't get it from you either.
Yeah, closing the hearing means no more, no more information, no evidence, no nothing, no, you know, no input from anybody else, so, yeah, so.
Okay, I just, we just need to be clear what we're, what we need to bring back, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
Madam Chair, I, I would like, uh, you to address also, um, the Isaac Davis Trail issue. I mean, I think the, i- if it's not visible from the trail, I guess it's not subject to the 106 review. Um, but the Isaac Davis Trail is a jewel in town. Um, you know, if it is visible from the trail, we would want to know that and, and take a look at that as well. Sounds like it isn't, but, um, I'm not sure you've actually looked at that yet, so.
Okay. Anything else, suppose?
So I move to continue?
You have to specify the date and the time.
Right, I move to continue this hearing until July tenth at seven thirty P M.
Second, um, Jones moved and Katie second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, it's. A little. Just, um, I have, I have a couple of hearing, I just, I have to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I think, what I'm going to do is, is I'm going to read, um, the seven forty-five hearing notice. Um, and then we'll continue with your presentation. And, um, I will probably, I will have to stop and read, uh, the next hearing notice at seven fifty. So I'm going to have to read seven forty-five notice and the seven fifty notice having to do with the restaurant. But first, let me read the first notice, the seven forty-five notice. Notice is hereby given under chapter one thirty-eight, section twelve of the general laws that the Board of Selectmen will hold a hearing in the Francis Faulkner Room two oh four in the Acton Town Hall, four seventy-two Main Street Act. And on June nineteen twenty seventeen at seven forty-five P M. On the application of, as we peel, Restaurant Dink for an all alcoholic beverage license located at seven, two seventy-three Main Street Act in Mass. The application is on file in the selectman's office and may be viewed during normal working hours. Go ahead and in five minutes I'll stop.
Okay, hi, uh, I'm Elizabeth Rest and I, uh, manage the Regional Housing Services Office. And I'm here before you tonight, this is the annual voting to, um, uh, approve the inter-municipal agreement. And as part of that, I offer to do a status update for the R H S O, just to give you some, some background before your voting of the I M A. Um, so we'll do a quick year-end review, talk about the plans and I'll go through the hours and the budget summary. So the, this is the service model for the R H S O. It was established in two thousand and eleven, so this is the start of the seventh fiscal year coming up in F Y eighteen. Um, and so it was a, it started with fewer communities, I think there were five initially. Acton joined, um, probably after the first three years. And Burlington just joined recently. Lincoln used to be a member and has, um, you know, moved on to doing their own housing administration services. So I think just from that perspective, we feel that it's a model that has lasted. It's a very innovative model, it wasn't anything that was in existence at the state level. It was really developed through the town managers in this service area. And in fact, there are two other regional housing services offices with different towns using the same model. People feel that it's really an effective way to handle the complex administrative housing services. So we have the seven towns, they, they, um, are members of the, the office through the inter-municipal agreement. Concord's the lead community, Concord does all the procurement. There are four people who staff the office, we're all contractors through Concord. So Concord does all the R F Ps and the contracts with us. And you just pay and you get services of the four consultants. So we all have housing backgrounds and so it's a, it's a good way to, again, for tap into technical expertise. So, um, you could see at the bottom there, the, um, very hard to read, but all the statistics. So there's over five thousand units on the subsidized housing inventory between all the towns. So there's a lot of housing, um, and combine all the communities together are over ten percent. I think Weston and Acton are not quite at ten percent and the other communities in and of themselves are. Uh, so the, the F Y seventeen in review, I was just going to talk about that relative to the overall work plan for the R H S O. There are really six major functions and starting at the top right, we do the, on behalf of the town, we do monitoring of all the ownership units. So there are two hundred and sixty-three ownership units in, or three hundred and eighty, excuse me, um, in the R H S O. There are fifty-three in Acton and we're in touch with every owner on an annual basis, uh, to make sure they're complying with their restrictions. So they're living in the units, they've approved, uh, any refinancing and we handle the, um, the resales on behalf of the town. We don't really handle them, but we, uh, prepare documents for the town to execute. Uh, we do rental monitoring and you can see there are some of the numbers for Acton. We're doing a, starting to work with the old high school and then the inn, which really is supposed to be two ends. At Robbins Brook, there are three affordable units there and the assisted living component. And we work with the Acton Housing Authority as well. Um, we do moving around and the inventory management, we review compliance, we maintain inventories. Um, we help track the subsidized housing inventory for Acton and do that kind of paperwork. And also have sponsored training. Then we just did a fair housing training in June. We did homeowner post-purchase training earlier in the year. In fact, Janet was there, was just in this room last Thursday. Um, it was a custom training session designed for municipal boards and committees on fair housing compliance and land use policy. And then we have a, a general area of local board support, um, and so that's, varies by each town. We spend a lot of time with the, uh, with Nancy and the A C H C as well as the planning department. And we helped review the various forty B proposals, which have been very active in Acton over the last year. And then for F Y eighteen, I'm just going to really run through this pretty quick, I know you have a tight agenda, right? Um, so F Y eighteen, we're really going to continue the same work plan, continue to monitor the owners and the properties and the projects and local services, uh, support property managers. Our goal is to really help the property managers continue to, um, enhance their compliance and training and support. We have a website, W W W R H S O housing dot org, which has a lot of resident services and housing opportunities for, um, potential new residents as well as your housing inventory. So every project with pictures and documents, all the permits and regulatory agreements. Um, we amend the I M A annually and that's signed by all the selectmen, so that's your, your, um, your action item for today. And that was designed so that it's a very proactive, intentional program for you, so that you really recommit on an annual basis. We're moving to a new office owned by Concord located in Acton. So we're going to be very convenient to, to you, right down the street on Knox Trail. And we speak at conferences to enhance, uh, the program and ensure that, that, uh, we're connected to all the state partners. It's very important for, for all the towns and projects to develop and maintain all those relationships with Mass Housing, Mass Housing Partnership and D H C D. And continue dialogue with interested communities. There are two, uh, abutting or neighboring communities that have talked about joining. And we continue to talk to them to see if it's a fit for them and as well as whether we're able to support that from a staffing perspective. The budget is really all about the hours. Uh, most of the budget, as you'll see, is really staffing expense. And this is way more information than you would ever want. than you would ever want, I think. But it's really, you're buying hours, and that's what essentially you're charged at. We have, you know, billing rates based on hours. Communities can purchase additional supplemental hours. Acton is pretty much right on target in terms of this year, so you bought 320 hours, and I think we'll spend 320 this year, and you're buying 320 for next year, so pretty stable and no issues there. But you could see, anything that you would want to know about the hours right there. And then that correlates here to what the budget looks like. And again, most of the budget is staffing expense. There's some small program expense of $5,000, and Concord takes an administrative fee of $15,000 to support the accounting and the IT work and the cleaning and the office support and that kind of thing. And successfully completing six years of operation, and thank you for your continued support. I don't think the program would be successful without the executive-level leadership that continues to support the RHSO.
Thank you, Liz. And I'm going to read another notice, but I just wanted to recognize that the RHSO's services have been invaluable. I know in our town, just the monitoring of all of the affordable units is so much crisper. Just, all of the communications are just, it's, it would be impossible, I think, for ACHC to manage all of the work that you and your staff manages, so, and I think, I'm sure that the other member towns feel the same way, so thank you. And now I will read my notice, and then we, I will open it up for board comment and questions to you, okay? The Acton Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing notice, public hearing, no notice, on June 19, 2017 at 7:50 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street Act, and on the application of Al Hui Peal Restaurant Inc., 273 Great Road Act in Mass. under Section 140 of the Massachusetts General Laws for a Common Victual or License. The application can be inspected at Town Hall during normal business hours. And now, board questions? Comments? Yeah, go ahead.
In the, I gave you a handout of these slides, but I also attached to there, we do a quarterly status report, so I attached that to there, which has, you know, again, a lot more detail about the specific activity and tasks.
Great. So board questions, comments? Peter?
I just, you mentioned that Concord puts out RFPs. That's an RFP for your services for the regional housing? And does that put out yearly?
No, it's a three-year contract.
Three years, okay.
So in fact, there was an RFP for all the staff for this year, and we're waiting to hear whether we're gonna get the job.
Okay. I mean, are there other bidders?
I don't know that.
Okay. You, you mentioned you do work with the Housing Authority. They clearly certify, you know, eligibility and rents and everything for all of their tenants. What kind of work do you do with the Housing Authority?
So the Housing Authority has some LIP units. That's Local Initiative Program from DHCD, which requires annual certification by the town to DHCD. So we just work with Kelly, get her information, and put it into a report that Steve then sends to the DHCD.
Okay. And then finally, Acton pays for your services with Community Preservation Act funds. You're, as I understand it, you're asking tonight for a vote to, for the town to sign this agreement, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I'm assuming the town is, I haven't read the whole thing, actually, but the staff and you recommend we sign it. Okay. It hasn't changed, I guess, from last year.
Well, it's a three-year term with annual amendments, so it did change from the last three years, but it's been vetted through all the town managers and appropriate town councils. It didn't change, most of it's the same, a few, you know, dates are, and Burlington signed from that.
Right. Oh, okay. Well, this request for funding comes to the Community Preservation Committee through the Community Housing Corporation. That's, they ask for the money under their affordable housing thing. They've been asking for a two-year commitment. I can't remember what we did this year, but the year before, we cut it back to one because we had other projects that we didn't have enough money to fund. Does that come from you? It was unclear to me where that two-year commitment came from. Is that something that you require, or is that our own staff?
No, no, that's why the, the IMA is an annual re-signing up, because all the appropriations are one year.
Okay.
So, so we, and not all towns do it through CPA, so your communities do it different ways, so no.
Peter, that was, that was the Acton CPC's, when this first started out, I was representing, I don't know who, either this board or Conservation Commission, but the RHSO proposal first came up, and there, because the fee was so small, I think the proposal was to just cover a two-year span, and that was where that came from. It was Acton CPC, so.
Okay. I think it's, what's, is it $25,000 a year now? I mean, like?
I've forgotten.
The number is in here, so.
It's twen, for FY seventeen, eighteen, it's $22,771, and for FY seventeen was $23,414.
Yeah.
So it's gone of about $2,000 in five years or 10 years. It hasn't, doesn't go up very fast, so, which is good. Peter, anything else?
No.
Katie? Just wanted to say thank you for coming tonight and for the work. As Janet said, it's been, you know, a really useful model for this community, and so we really appreciate it. My only question was, it seems like, just looking at the number of units towns have and then the number of hours they use, there's some towns that have a lot more units and use fewer hours. Is it just, I mean, you know, why, wouldn't it, shouldn't it trend closer to, if you have more units, you use more hours?
So Burlington, for example, has a lot of units, but they have very few projects and developments. So they have a number of large rental projects which really make up, you know, 8,000 of their units.
Right.
So, and then some of those are monitored and managed by other third-party property managers.
Okay.
So it's a different kind of time. And then the big, one of the big drivers for ours is that local support.
Yep.
Which is about new projects.
Okay, so it's really if you have more new projects coming down?
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense. All right, well, thank you very much.
Joan, questions?
Okay. My, my question has to do with the fact that of the list of member towns, Acton and Weston stand out for not being at 10% or higher, and I don't know if you have any words of wisdom to share with us about what the other towns, I know, we know what Concord has done, and I think there are some other towns that are very proactive. I think Lincoln, notwithstanding its size, probably was over 10%, but they've been very, very pro-affordable housing since, I mean, I was in high school at Lincoln Sudbury, so. But what, what is the secret? You know, obviously Weston, you can kind of understand why maybe they'd be lagging because what they consider to be affordable would probably be barely affordable for me, but.
So I think it's always, it's a sweet spot between having some land that a private developer is interested in that can get you over that 10%. I think most of the communities, if not all of them, even in the Commonwealth, get over the 10% through the large rental, because you're gonna count all those units. So I know you have the Powder Mill project coming, but it's not quite enough to kind of get you over that hump. But two of those will, and certainly the Powder Mill would certify Acton. But Sudbury had an opportunity where Raytheon was leaving, and Sudbury took a very active role to talk to Raytheon and said, "We want large rental right here." And so that helped steer that project. And that was, I think, similar to Concord when the, you know, property came up and they were developing it, so Concord took a very active role to encourage that development. So, but you need to have, you know, that piece of land and that developer ready to develop it. So I think having a housing production plan in a very supportive atmosphere. I know that when the developers are interested, they go talk to the ACHC, and that's a very welcoming kind of open door for the conversations to start and to talk about that within the town. And the strong, the strong history of LIP projects, the Local Initiative Program is also, makes Acton, you know, a good place for developers. Developers don't want to come to a town that they feel is gonna be fought every step of the way.
Yeah, I think, I think historically, the effort has been to focus on LIPs, smaller-scale projects where there's a lot of collaboration involving the developer and with input from residents and others in town. But I, I know that more recently, people are starting to get frustrated because they ask, "Well, what percent are we at?" And because the Concord MUSE went up, and they were right away over their 10%, I think there's sort of some feeling countering what was supposed to be the feeling of the townspeople in Acton, that we don't want high rises, but there's this other competing feeling that, but we want to get to 10% so we can stop dealing with these 40B projects, but, yeah.
So in Concord, in fact, the, in 2020, we've done a lot of, we're doing a lot of work, like projecting out the, the percentages in 2020 when the denominator will change for everybody. Concord would actually be dropping below the 10%, so they've just been working on what's gonna be their next project to keep them over the 10%, and they're just funding that and pushing that through in terms of permitting and, and supporting that project.
Interesting. Did you have something else, Katie?
Yeah, I, I meant to ask, so do you keep lists of the number of units that are actually affordable in towns? I know when you build these apartments, that all of the units count towards your affordability, so when you're calculating out if you're over the 10% or not, they all do. But in looking at the number of units that are actually affordable, do you have numbers there? Because I think it would be interesting to see where the towns stand in terms of the number of affordable units that, in reality, they have.
We, we do, and on the website, and I, I could, I don't have it right here, but on the website, in the Acton Housing Inventory, if you went there, there's a little, three paragraphs that talk about the housing in Acton, and in fact, that, that exact number is in that narrative, and so we do keep track of that, and we have that detail.
Yeah, because it sounds like, from what you've said, most of the other, I knew Concord, but I didn't know about the other communities, if they had gotten over the 10% with, with apartment units, with the large apartment complexes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Did you, do you have any other questions? Okay. Questions from the audience?
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't show you where that is. So in that status report that I gave you, on page three, there's a, there's a section So, can you see that? And you see the Acton, and so of the rental, there's 501 affordable rentals on the SHI, and of those, 53% are actually affordable. So that's where you can see those numbers. Sure.
To Frederick, West Acton. Some secret around here, I'm concerned about environmental subsidy and economic justice, and I do want to make a point that the public necessity that's provided for in the urban renewal statutes that 40B stemmed from was about addressing the most neediest, and it, over the years, it became, this, this definition of affordable got changed, and now is, I think, in Acton, something like $50,000 or more to even participate in the affordable So I want to make this point, that the Weston versus Acton, the one big difference in Acton is that we voluntarily allowed, encouraged, facilitated the building of over 2,500 apartments on Route 2A that we don't get credit for, and I understand why we don't get credit for them. I'm convinced now that they do need to get deed restricted, because people are buying them up in, with cash to use them for a couple of years for the schools, and then they sell them to somebody else in cash, and the liar, the buyers are lined up to buy them ahead of time. So just keeping that into consideration, I would like to understand how many units have been created below $30,000 a year and below $50,000 a year, where there's actual, an actual need. And when we talk about what's actually affordable, for me, somebody who makes $50,000 a year can already afford what's on the market around here, and so for me, that isn't actually affordable. What's actually affordable is, is what somebody can, can pay that's making minimum wage, so that we can actually have worker housing around here. So I'd like an answer on how many units have been created in Acton under, for people, reserved for people that are under 30,000 and people that are reserved for under $50,000 a year. And I have other questions, too, but that's the first one I can't figure out from any of the inventory data, which I do appreciate, because it's been, the inventory data is much better than it was before, so I appreciate that. But I would like an answer to that.
Well, you mean like right now?
Well, Beth, if you, if you don't have.
I've been asking for years, so yes, if you can.
I've never met you. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Russ.
If you, if you don't have the information right now, Beth, don't feel compelled to provide it right now.
I don't have anything.
I mean, you can take it under advisement, you could send the information to us, and then.
I think that'd be really great. So I think I have a question for Steve. Oh, he's gone all the way on that one. The difference between the 795 units and the 561, those are the ones that are actually qualified, like people have to actually have an income qualified, or what was the difference between the 75, 795 on your slide and the 561?
This particular slide? The 795, that one over there?
Yes.
Yes. There are 795 units that are regulated through the Local Initiative Program that are rental units that we assist the towns in monitoring across all the service area. The 561 are how many units are on the SHI in Acton?
So the 561 are the ones where people have to actually income-qualify, or?
No, they're on the subsidized housing inventory, so for rental projects, all units would count on the Acton subsidized housing inventory.
So what's the 795, then?
The 795 units are across all the towns in the RHSO. Those are rental units regulated by the Local Initiative Program.
Thank you, I thought it was Acton only, okay, thank you.
Tara, I've got to hold off, I've got to read a public notice. Public hearing of the Acton Board of Selectmen will be held on Monday, June 19, 2017 at 7:55 PM in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 of the Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street Act, and for National Grid to install and maintain approximately 1,000 feet more or less of 4-inch gas main in Arlington Street and approximately 1,800 feet more or less of 4-inch gas main in Newtown Road, from the existing 2-inch gas main at number 18 Arlington Street to the existing main on Newtown Road at Hammond Street, all of which, all of which to, this doesn't make any sense, and to abandon the regulator at Arlington Street at Union Turnpike. So, go ahead, Tara.
And, so when did the A, RHSO begin?
2011.
2011. Because I'm concerned that we're paying more money to accelerate more building of stuff that we don't need, and that's just my observation over the years, that the millions of dollars we've spent facilitating 40B would have bought up a nice chunk of 2-way in terms of actual affordable housing. Not according to what the law says, but what people on the street believe. We had, I went around advertising one of these LIP programs, 40B programs, and people that showed up were disappointed that they couldn't afford to be part of the affordable housing program, and it was very disappointing, because one person took time off and was carrying a baby and dragged himself in here as a single dad to go be part of the affordable housing excitement and then was turned away. So, just, thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
I just wanted to mention that the affordability level is on the website for every development, so you could see how many units are at 30%, 50%, 60%, or 80%.
Tara, I'm gonna, I'm, I've got three hearings that are backed up now, and we, this is really principally for the purpose of our updating, updating the agreement, all right? I, I know what your position is about affordable housing. I think that there are some people who are pretty well experienced in affordable housing who would say there's an issue with trying to say have affordable housing that is owner-occupied for people who have no, have no resources.
It's not just owner-occupied.
Because I know that that's what you've talked about, and, and, you know, I think that your, your perspective on who should, the affordable housing people should be providing housing to is one perspective. The mainstream people providing affordable housing are focused at, apparently, a contingent that is, has somewhat more resources than where you would like.
Can I just, one last comment that will be shorter than what you just said to me about limiting my comments, is that in town, in Boston and Cambridge, these folks are creating projects that are for 30% AMI and 50% AMI, and they're doing it, they're making a profit, and I think that we can do it here. The people that are making money on these projects, I personally know, are making a killing. Thank you.
Thank you. Boston, Boston and Cambridge is not Acton anyhow. Mr. Manager, I think that the purpose of this presentation is for us basically to vote to approve.
And sign the IMA, yes.
And signing it, execute the inter-municipal agreement, which has been updated.
I'll make a motion to approve and execute the IMA for the Regional Housing Services Office.
Second.
Katie moved. Joan second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you. Thank you very much, Liz. And that was.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you. Thank you very much, Liz. And that was, that was a very good program last, last Thursday, by the way.
Good, thank you.
But now, El Hupil Restaurant, sorry. But I think we can probably have one presentation to cover two, the two different licenses, and, but please, if you would just introduce yourself and explain what it is that you're looking for, although it's self-explanatory, so, thank you.
Good, good evening. My name is Frank Ravenall. I am an attorney with Christian Sanders Ravenall in Needham, and I am representing Mr. and Mrs. Moreno, all of the principals of El Hupil Restaurant. And we're for you this evening on a, an application for a transfer of the existing all-alcoholic beverage license for the location at 273 Gray Road, which had been held by Jagdeep Corporation, doing business as Monsoon Indian Bistro, and also on a, an application for a common Victualler's license as well. My clients recently acquired the, the assets of, of the Monsoon Bistro Restaurant, and they are looking forward very much to establishing a new restaurant at that location, which would be a Mexican restaurant, full-service dine-in and take-out Mexican restaurant. My clients, Mr. and Mrs. Moreno, we're sitting right over here, this is Sergio Moreno and his wife Alma, and they, they're married and they immigrated to the United States 27 years ago. Mr. Moreno became a U.S. citizen in 2006, and Mrs. Moreno became a citizen in 2009. Mr. Moreno has over 25 years' experience in the restaurant business, has been involved in every facet of restaurant operations while working in five different restaurants over that time. He started out as a dishwasher and worked his way up to a cook and eventually a general manager. Mrs. Moreno also has many years' experience in, in the restaurant and food service business. She started out working with a family-owned bakery, where she worked as a cashier for many years, and then also with, with her husband at their restaurant in Maynard. And so they, they moved to Maynard in 2002. At that time, they both worked at a restaurant in Cambridge, where Mr. Moreno was general manager and Mrs. Moreno was a cashier. In 2010, the Morenos opened the El Hupil Restaurant at 51R Main Street in Maynard. El Hupil Restaurant is also a Mexican restaurant, in, in similar vein to what they look to open in Acton. They were, they were the first restaurant in Maynard to obtain a carry-in license. In 2012, they were issued a beer and wine license, and 2015, they were issued a full liquor license. It's been a very highly successful restaurant. They've done, they've done extremely well, and that led them to look for opportunities to open another location. When they heard about the opportunity to acquire the, the assets of the Monsoon Indian Bistro, they saw it as a, as a perfect opportunity to open that important second location for them. It's a, it's a highly visible location. You, I'm sure most of you know where it is. It's a, it's a freestanding building, and it's, it's, it's highly visible. The, the Indian Bistro's been there since approximately 2007, I understand, so it's been there for quite some time. It's, it's a very well-established restaurant in that area. And Mr. and Mrs. Moreno are very excited about the opportunity to, to open a new location. As I said, they've, they recently acquired the assets of, of Jagdeep Corporation. They've entered into a long-term lease for the location, so their position there is, is secure for the long term. They have, they've formed a new corporation to own and operate this restaurant, and this may be a housekeeping matter. I had to dress it with, with Lisa Tomel. The, the original, original notice had the applicant as El Hupil Mexican Restaurant, Inc., but the Morenos subsequently decided to form a, a new entity to, to own this restaurant and to hold the licenses. So the name of that entity is El Hupil Acton Restaurant Corp. And I believe the application was, was amended to reflect that new entity. The, they intend to maintain hours of operation from Tuesday to Sunday, from 11:00 AM until midnight, with food service until 9:30, and a bar service until midnight. They would be closed on Mondays. This is consistent with the common Victualler's and liquor license that has currently been in, in effect for, for Jagdeep. Mrs. Moreno would be the manager at the Acton location. They intend to staff Acton with five employees, who are in the process of hiring and training. They have prepared a comprehensive and detailed alcohol service policy to be followed at the Acton location. In terms of the physical site, they just plan on making some cosmetic and decorative changes to the space, but the floor plan and seating will essentially remain the same. The current seating capacity is six, 67 seats. So, so, you know, in summary, the Morenos, I think, have a very solid track record as restaurant operators, as alcohol servers. They've, have an excellent record in Maynard. Their restaurant's been very successful. They've never had any, any issues whatsoever within the service of food or in the service of alcohol. They've been very successful, they're very well-respected in the community, and they're looking forward to bringing that same, a, a level of, of, of expertise and responsibility to Acton and, and becoming important, an important part of the community.
Great, thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Peter?
Thank you. The, the restaurant in Maynard is, is next to the old dates hardware? Is that where, it is in back of the, yeah, okay. Been there, excellent. I just have a couple of questions about the application. I, the documents we have still have El Hu, Hu Pio Restaurant, Inc., without reflecting the new corporate certificate from Acton, so I think, I, is that part of the record now, or?
I don't know.
You have the new application, okay. I'm, I'm looking at page five of your application, which is, uh, the retail license application, monetary transmittal form, I guess. It's an A-B-C-C form. But it's got that you're transferring the license, it's got the amount of money you're paying for the license, it's got the source of cash investment, which is, the owner's putting up a certain amount of money.
Yes.
It doesn't have any source of financing, and the instructions on the form say the total amount of cash investments and financing ought to equal the total cost of the license. So I'm just wondering about the financial arrangement here that this form seeks that doesn't, just, doesn't, you know, show us how this is being paid for, basically.
Yes, they have, they have obtained financing from Eastern Bank. Eastern is not requiring the pledge of the license of any kind, so they've essentially made the funds available to the Morenos for the acquisition to use as they see fit, but they've not required a, a formal pledge of the license in any way.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I, I don't know if your amended application had that information, and I don't see it related necessarily to a pledge of the license, but, but the way I'm reading the form, you're much more familiar with it than I am. Maybe you don't think it needs to be filled out, but it seems to say it should be.
You're looking at page five?
Yeah.
So we have a purchase price of the business, which is $200,000, which is correct. We have a source of cash investment, $40,000, and $160,000 coming from Eastern Bank, which is the amount of credit that's been extended by, by the bank.
Okay. That's just not filled in on my form. I don't, I don't know if that's the amended form. You're, you're not packaged, that's a blank.
I, I have it filled in in mind, so I'm not sure why there's a discrepancy, but that, that is what it should read.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. Okay, so we'll take your word for it, that that's, and the updated one, you did fill that in.
Yes, yes, that, that is filled in. So it's $200,000 total, $160,000 from Eastern Bank, $40,000 cash from, from the Morenos.
That was my question. Thank you.
Katie?
Thank you, yes, you answered my question that you're keeping your Maynard restaurant and opening, this is a second one. In terms of the proposed hours, Lisa, do we have many businesses that are open until 12:00 AM? Okay, and then do most have a period of time where they stop food service and stay? Yeah, you go off the top of your head, it's okay. I was wondering, is that the same arrangement you have in your Maynard restaurant as well? Okay, and do you have, I, first of all, I want to say I really liked your alcohol service policy. I thought it was very thorough and, and thought out, and, you know, and I really appreciate that. Do you have, or have you had any issues since having your liquor license in Maynard with any having to cut people off for any over-service, and especially in that time period when you're not serving food, but you are serving alcohol?
No.
No, okay, so no issues, and you haven't had any incidences of over-service violations or anything?
We usually do three drinks in-
And that, yeah, I really liked, I really liked that part of your policy. So again, I wanted to, to say thank you. I thought, I thought it was much more thorough than many others that we see. And, and then my only other comment is that in the common Victualler's application, we have a note from our planning department that I believe you guys were proposing 67 seats, but it indicates that we, we can only allow 65 seats without a use special permit. So I wasn't sure if you had seen that comment. It's a two-seat difference, but I think we should make sure with the planning department.
65.
65.
Okay.
Yeah, 65 is fine.
Okay, okay, so I just want to make sure.
That's, that's an issue.
Okay, excellent. Otherwise, I just want to say thank you and welcome to town. And oh, my other question was, when do you anticipate opening?
Well, as soon as we get the license, in probably the first week of July.
First week, oh, excellent, that's very soon. Okay, great. Well, as a big Mexican parent, I was very excited to see this in, in, in our packet, so I already told my boyfriend that we'd be going very shortly, so I hope to see you soon, and thank you, and welcome to town.
Joan?
No, mine's not a seat.
Okay. Yes, that was the one thing that was missing from the application, was the menu, but.
I bet they're Maynard menu, I saw the menu, and it looks pretty good.
Yeah, no, because this is, you know, this is about the time when I start to get hungry, but anyhow. Okay, any, any other questions? Questions, comments from the audience? All right. Do we have maybe a motion to approve separately, the liquor license and then the common Vic license?
I'll make a motion to approve the all-alcohol beverage license transfer from Jagdeep Corp. to El Hu Pio, and now it's Acton Restaurant, Inc.?
Acton Restaurant Corp.
Acton Restaurant Corp.
Second.
Katie moves, Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Next motion?
I'd like a motion to approve the common Victualler's license for El Hupil Restaurant, Acton Corp., for 65 seats.
Second.
Katie moves, Peter seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Congratulations and welcome to town.
Thank you very much.
National Grid. Thank you, thank you for waiting.
Good evening.
Hi.
Did, did you want me to read a proposal again?
Um, I, I guess, do you, I don't know if you have a map, or if you just want to, is it pretty much what I-
I, I have a small sketch, which you probably have as part of your original packet.
Yeah, we, I think we have somewhere in here, yeah, in our packet, we have that.
But I, I looked at, on our maps prior to coming here, and it's essentially linking the main that comes down Arlington to the existing main that's on Newtown Road, is making that kind of stretch there, is linking the two together with a four-inch plastic main, both of which now in the ground are, consist of a two-inch coated steel main. And we're looking to abandon the reg pit, the regulator. That's that last sentence in the, in the proposal, by linking the two together. You know, when it's kind of clumsily worded, all of which to abandon the regulator on Arlington at Union Turnpike.
Okay, questions, Katie?
So just to clarify, you're not hooking up any additional residences, but you're just connecting the two mains?
At this point in time, I don't know, or have information in front of me, what or who may have, you know, reached out to us to say, hey, if you've ever extend a main down by my house, I would be interested in, you know, hooking onto the system. I don't have that information with me. But the main thrust is to, you know, connect those two existing mains and to get rid of that regulator pit. What else comes on afterwards is?
So you want to do that without any intention of connecting future property? I mean, do we do that period?
Yeah, as long as there's a main on the street that goes past a residence, and the resident, you know, you know, wishes to have our service, we would, you know, by all means-
Oh, no, I get that, I'm just saying, your motivation to do this is, even if there weren't any residences there that you could hook up to, would you still be proposing to do this, or is to extend it?
Correct.
Okay. Is that for safety reasons or for other, I mean?
You know, I, I'm not the engineer.
Okay.
But it's, you know, part of a, you know, kind of a multifaceted plan to replace aging infrastructure. So you've got coated steel and coated steel, and we're connecting those two with plastic, so next step would to get rid of the next stretch of coated steel, and you replace that with the more durable plastic.
But I guess why not just replace the current coated steel with pla, why the need for the new connection right now?
I think it's just-
Except for to bring it, to make it available to new people to hook up.
Well, that, and, you know, I think it's just timing, manpower, and all that, that, you know, we're working from this way out, from the reg pit out, and then going this way, instead of going that way.
And do you know how many properties that it would extend it by that could potentially connect?
I, I don't. I, I know it's a fairly significant amount of footage. It didn't look like on our map, there was, you know, a ton of homes, you know, past number 18 Arlington Street. I might be wrong, in the same way going this way on Newtown.
Okay. All right, thank you. Other questions, Peter?
Just for my information, why do you go to four inches off a two-inch pipe? Was it, is that the new standard for gas pipes?
I, I think it has to do with, you know, the, the flow, given a good, that's what the regular, regulator does, is, you know, give us a good, consistent flow, and to abandon that, you need a larger, oops, sorry, larger pipe to maintain that constant flow of gas, and then of course, there's always, you know, the potential need down the road. As more residents hook on, you'll need more, more gas coming down the, down the road, so to speak.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't know if you've been here before, you will here. We, we have concerns in town about leaks of methane, and I'll let the citizens speak to that issue, but I would still like to see on all these applications, some information from the engineering department about leaks in the areas of where these new gas mains are being put in. It seems to me if Green Acton can come up with that information from the study that was done in Acton and the town supported, as well as statewide websites that identify all leaks, that at least we should know within a quarter mile, or half a mile, or whatever, of where they're putting these new mains, how many leaks there are. So that could inform us in helping to draft a bylaw that we might be bringing to the December town meeting. So it seems to me engineering would be pretty easy for engineering to put that information in these memos. Thank you.
Jingsong, Joan, anything else? Okay. What do we want to do here? Oh, audience, audience members.
Jim Smater Grant, 18 Half Moon Hill. So it seems like each time in the last year and a half that we've, have another natural gas connection hearing in front of the Acton Board of Selectment, we make some progress together on understanding gas leaks and understanding natural gas, or making some progress on agreements on what's important and what policy should be. I counted it back, this will be the fifth time I'm here to comment on a gas line connection, and I hope this is no exception. To summarize the general situation here, we're- To summarize, the general situation here, we're in a climate emergency. A key goal in slowing the impact of climate change in order to avoid the worst impacts is to slow the use of fossil fuels as much as we can, as quickly as we can. Natural gas, ninety-five percent methane, it's a fossil fuel and an extremely potent greenhouse gas. At every stage of production, processing and transmission, there are some leaks, and methane has more than eighty times the impact on the climate as CO2 by volume over a twenty-year period when it leaks into our atmosphere. Federal policy is stalled, or actually going backwards. State policy is catching up, but it's still under court sanction for not meeting the goals of the Massachusetts Global Warming Solutions Act. So it's up to us in each town and city to act as boldly as we can. Okay, so now on to this particular application. The stated motivation of the project is to remove the regulator, in particular, that that's the regulator near Arlington and Route Two that mediates between the two hundred pounds per square inch long distance line that runs along Route Two to the local main that runs north on Arlington Street. And to stop using that regulator, the proposal is connect the houses along Arlington Street to the existing line that comes down Hammond. But you may notice in your knowledge of Acton streets that Hammond Street doesn't actually connect to Arlington Street, so there's Newtown Road in between, which as far as I can tell from looking at the property records, there's no gas line there, or for some reason the houses haven't hooked up to it. And that new gas main also goes right by Lincoln Street, which, where there's also no new, there's no natural gas mains. So why is this such a big deal? Let's recall the basic climate reduction plan that Green Acton has talked to you about before, reduce energy use, switch the remaining energy use to electricity, and then clean up that electric supply with increasing amounts of renewable energy. So for houses, this generally means encouraging a switch to efficient and comfortable air source heat pumps for heating and cooling. If you're currently heating with oil or with electric baseboards or propane, switching to the newest air source heat pump technology is compelling financially. The payback is quick, there's state support, including seven-year no-interest loans and rebates available from the state. But the math is not so compelling once you have gas in your house. So our race now is to get households that don't have gas yet to convert their current systems to air source heat pumps. Once they have gas lines in at current prices for electricity and gas, they typically won't even consider switching until their furnaces need replacing. This work will bring gas lines within yards of the houses along Newtown Road, and as the applicant suggested, once there's a, a main line right there in front of a house, it's a fairly routine and expected matter for households to call the utilities and say, hey, you've got a gas main there, let's hook us up. Now, on the other hand, the utilities might argue that the regulators can be a source of leaks, and that the proposed plastic pipe is much less leak-prone than the coated steel pipe it's replacing. So before approving this work, let's have the utility answer some questions in writing. Why is this particular work more urgent than fixing any of the other gas leaks in Acton, including the other, the numerous leaks along Prospect Street that are over five thousand square feet each, or the grade-two leaks found by the MAPC sniffing truck along School Street or Martin Street, Mass Ave, Central Street and elsewhere? Where are the environmentally significant leaks in Acton, and what's the plan for fixing them? And if we don't know yet, and I think we don't know exactly where all those leaks are, then what's the plan for finding them? The ones that are leaking significant amounts of gas but aren't pooling in such a way that they're explosive. So these are environmentally significant but not what's called grade-one, where the gas company has to rush out quickly and fix it. How do we start unwinding our natural gas infrastructure instead of extending it? Last time, the vote was three to one in favor of allowing the construction continue. The first time in my memory that it wasn't unanimous. So I'm wondering what it would take to add another vote or two against, or to require that the gas company answer some of these questions before approval is granted. How bold can we be in defense of our future? Thank you.
Hi. Deborah Seimes, Concord Road. I'm going to try to do this without tearing up. I beg your indulgence for standing up here once again to say that we must find a way to diminish significantly the demand for fossil fuels for energy. Federal progress, I'm kind of repeating a little what Jim said, I realize. Federal progress in this realm has all but stalled, and at the state level, we see aspiration but inadequate action to date. Many of us are working to pick up that pace. Here in Acton, we have the ability, and I would argue the moral imperative, to act locally. There are compelling climate reasons to reduce natural gas demand. Jim has spoken eloquently, eloquently to this, but I want to remind us of another reason. Each time we permit new natural gas infrastructure, in this case, twenty-eight, twenty-eight-hundred linear feet of it, which, you know, if the average frontage is a hundred and fifty, I haven't done the math, but, we build potential and usually real demand that catalyzes more fracking and extreme extractive process. Despite industry's greenwashing of natural gas, which we should just call methane plus, we need to recognize that fracking contaminates aquifers, destabilizes geology and causes earthquakes, compromises human health through the toxic chemicals it injects into the earth and consumes huge amounts of water. All of this apart from the emissions issues that it represents. You've heard us say this before, but every time we allow more methane infrastructure, we create demand that leverages more of this terrible technology, and we lock ourselves into coming decades of fossil fuel use and all the impacts that that accelerates. This isn't necessary. We are entirely capable of ratcheting down our fossil fuel use, reducing emissions, transitioning to a renewable energy portfolio, implementing more efficiency measures, enacting demand-response strategies, boosting renewables projects and developing a new green, smart grid. We can't do all of that locally, obviously, but maybe we can draw some kind of line in the sand and consider bold action for our town as well as modeling for other municipalities whose residents, who, who are also seeing rising concern among their residents. I know this is a challenging issue for you guys, because you operate with myriad considerations and expectations and constraints. I do appreciate your position, and yet, I'm going to stand here and plead that in alignment with your recent and excellent selectmen's goal of developing a townwide sustainability policy, you do all you possibly can do to say no or not until to these utility requests. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tara Fredericks, West Acton. Thank you, Jim and Deborah, I agree with everything they say. I will also make the note that the demand that's created by your saying yes to this is affecting the poorest people in the country where these fracking wells go. I urge you to vote no. If you can't bring yourself to vote no for this particular application, I hope you also bring up or move to and second and vote for a notice to the gas company, a sixty-day notice that there will be no more approvals until they fix these leaks. I also would like you to answer to the fact that there was zero votes for the gas leak bylaw, and I urge you to move on that even though it didn't make it into this top five with the very limited ranked choice voting rules that were set in place. Thank you.
Tara, on the gas bylaw vote, you have to understand, we have a lot of proposed ideas, including a number that were from citizens. This is the first time we actually got a campaign. We got lobbied to support certain ideas. I think, I'm pretty sure that the gas bylaw is moving forward.
Cool.
And it's going to be, there are people working on it. I think I said that at the beginning of the meeting. So the fact that it got no votes is not remarkable, because there are a lot of things that are in progress or are likely to get worked on that got no votes. We just, it's, it's not a, a measure of, you know, the inadequacy of the voting system, it's just the way things fall out. When you have over thirty ideas to vote on and you only have five votes, something's going to fall out and it doesn't necessarily reflect on that we're not going to do anything about it, so.
Thank you. So then, I really want, my real main thing is to, somebody to vote no again, at least have it two to three, and urge or send a binding letter to the gas companies to give them a certain limited period of time to fix things before you'll vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, comments, questions? Yes, Katie?
Yeah, just to answer your question, Jim, about what it would take to, to get me to vote no, because you know that I, I want to, but I do feel constrained by what, what I think that we are bound to do or what we're kind of allowed to do under the requirements or, or under our current bylaw or state regulations. So for me, I think to vote no, I want to pass the natural gas bylaw that we're hopefully working towards and will hopefully bring to successful vote at December town meeting. And in the meantime, I think that while I won't vote no on this one, because I don't feel like I have the legal backing to do that, I do think that it's worthwhile for us to talk to town council and to understand what requirements they think that we can impose on these kinds of applications. So are they things like requiring fixing gas leaks or reporting them or other, you know, answering other questions? So I, I'd like as part of this, just to ask the town manager to speak with town council to get some answers, and we can talk offline about what some of those questions would be. But that's, that's sort of my perspective tonight, so I want to keep moving towards our sustainability policy and our natural gas bylaw, and once I have that in place, I'll feel a lot more comfortable saying no. But right now, I, I, with all the other considerations, I, I don't feel like I can vote no.
Yeah, I think, you know, I'm with you on that. I think the, because the last time we had one of these applications, I was asking online, and my email ended up in the packet, asking, you know, what, can we condition our, our approval? And basically, the response was, no, the best way to deal with this is to have a, a local bylaw that, an anti-gas leak bylaw that gives you a little more leverage with these things. So that's how we ended up moving forward on that. But any other comments, questions? Anybody? Peter? Or Ching Seung?
I'm just going to say kind of what Katie said. I, I don't think we have the legal authority to condition or deny this petition. To me, these are street opening permits, and we don't have the authority to deny these any more than we could tell the electric company they couldn't put underground electric lines in, or the water district, they couldn't dig the road to put new water mains in. And that was my understanding of town council's advice on this subject. I voted for this sustainability goal, because to me, it, it was an umbrella term that covered a whole bunch of issues, including this issue. The legal authority that we would have to condition this or deny it in certain circumstances would come from a bylaw that town meeting would adopt. And part of the sustainability goal in my mind was to work toward bringing that bylaw to the December special town meeting. And it included that sustainability goal in my mind includes trying to fund the carbon neutrality plan and policy that the Green Advisory Board's going to be working on, and possibly a tree clearing limit by law. All of those things in my mind are part of sustainability. So the fact that I didn't vote for four different things that, in my view, were covered by the sustainability goal, didn't reflect that I don't support those goals. So anyway, that's, that's where I'm coming from. I, I've got to vote to support, to approve this.
Joan?
Last time we had one of these hearings, the list of gas leaks was presented. Do we have any information from the company on when those will be fixed? Is there any schedule?
No, I think that's one of the issues, is there's no firm commitment.
Because the last time, the representative said she didn't know anything about that.
Yeah, yeah, and well, that was why I think Katie is suggesting that maybe we should confer with council, not only about, I think, about conditioning, but I think the idea of trying to communicate with the gas company, because Jim asked a good question, why is installing, you know, four-inch pipe so pressing when we have all these leaks that nobody apparently cares to deal with and less than until the road is opened in the area of those pipes? But, I mean, I think that's a fair question to ask. Not that we're going to get answers, but if we touch base with the right people, maybe we will. So the sniffer truck was apparently, I know Lisa Tonal confirmed that there was a sniffer truck going around town not long after the last hearing, so maybe that woman who, whom we, you know, sat upon at the last meeting did communicate with the higher-ups about the issue here, so, yes.
Jim Snyder-Grant, I just wanted to at least answer the part of Joan's question about gas leaks in this area. The, the MAPC truck unfortunately didn't drive in that area, so we don't have any detailed data, but we do have the utility data, which showed one leak near the intersection of Arlington and, where Arlington passes over Route Two, which may very well be the regulator. The, the places where you, you know, switch gas from one place to another are often the sources of leaks.
Deborah Seimes, another quick, I want to take this opportunity to sort of, we did this at the last hearing for an application, a National Grid application, but to say to the representative by way of saying it to you that I don't know how intentional or unintentional it is that the left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, but as a citizen and a resident, I find it kind of galling that people who come to these hearings to ask for approval, over and over again, say, no, no. So that's all, thanks. Just one more comment. Through my work with Sanctuary, looking at federal supremacy and regulations and policing, using police power, it came to my attention that Anderson and Krieger has a goodly portion of their business, maybe more than half, that works for the corporations, that, so they work to fight towns for the corporations. And that that's widely known in the municipal attorney business, that there are certain groups of attorneys that do not have any private companies or very small numbers, so that their interest in helping you get something in place sooner is not as, in other words, they're willing to go further than companies that are very conservatively serving interests that are beyond maybe the municipalities. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I got to respond to that. I mean, I, I reject that comment completely. Anderson and Krieger is an outstanding firm. They meet their ethical obligation to zealously represent the town of Acton, and there is no conflict, as far as I'm concerned, between the fact that they might represent other private companies and the advice they give to Acton.
Thank you, Peter, because if you hadn't said something, I would have. All right, any other audience comments, questions? Okay, what, what do we want to do here? Move to, do we have a motion to approve?
A motion to regretfully approve.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, Katie moves and Peter seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstaining. So everybody approved, but Joan's dissenting, so. Thank you. All right, now we're on to selectmen's business, and before we get to the very last item, I am going to read all the consent agenda items, because for the very last item having to do with the town manager search committee, the town manager plans to leave the room, and I don't want him to have to wait for any further discussion, so. Maybe actually, why don't I just do the consent agenda now so that we can just deal with selectmen's business? I will do the consent agenda now. Committee, item twelve, committee appointments, Cindy Patton, full member to associate member, and Leslie Johnson, associate member to full member, Commission on Disabilities. Item thirteen, committee.
Hold.
Are you holding thirteen or twelve?
Yes.
Oh, okay, you, you can wait until after.
I was told, that's what I should do.
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah, usually it's right after I read it that you could say, "Hold." Okay, so you want to hold item 13. All right. Committee appointments, William Alstrom, Tom Gillespie, Betsy Crystal, Mike Perry, Claire Siska, Rodney Smith, full members, Dog Park Committee. And then we will go through all of them, and then we'll go back to the held items. Okay? Item 14, committee appointment, Mona Shandra, associate member, Green Advisory Board. Item 15, committee appointment, Lori Cooney, associate member, Council on Aging. Item 16, committee appointment, Janet Adachi, West Acton Sewer Action Advisory Committee, Board of Selectmen Representative. This is really a formality, because I'm the liaison and technically I'm supposed to be on the board, and sometimes I think we should change the charts so I don't have to be. Item 17, one-day alcoholic beverage license, Infant Toddler Children's Center, Church of the Good Shepherd, June 21, 2017. Item 18, farmer's market license, Pony Shack Cider Inc. Item 19, parking clerk appointment, Yashira Gonzalez. Item 20, accept gift, Recreation Department, a gift totaling $100 from South Acton Gas for funding a new recreation facility and playground at Jones Field. Item 21, accept gift, Council on Aging, gift totaling $100 from Alan and Louise Poehler for building furnishings. Item 22, gift, Council on Aging, totaling $250 from William J. Bradley for building furnishings. Item 23, gift, Council on Aging, totaling $50 from Susan Hunt for building furnishings. Item 24, gift, Council on Aging, totaling $100 from Louis Ventola for building furnishings. Item 25, gift, Council on Aging, gift totaling $100 from Anonymous for building and furnishings. Item 26, gift, Council on Aging, a gift totaling $100 from Mimi and Dave Flannery for building furnishings. Item 27, gift, Council on Aging, totaling $100 from Margaret Graham for building furnishings. Item 28, gift, Council on Aging, a gift totaling $5,000 from Gail Greenlee for building furnishings. Item 29, gift, Council on Aging, totaling $30 from Carolyn Hoff for building furnishings. Item 30, request to dispose of obsolete items, Acton Memorial Library. Item 31, accept gift, Recreation Department, totaling $200 from Leona and Christopher Lee for funding new recreational facility playground at Jones Field. And item 22, 32, accept gift, Municipal Properties, tree donation from Benchmark Senior Living. And so Joan, you held item 13?
Yes, there should be five appointments and two.
There's only five members on the committee, according to the charge, but there are six people recommended here for full members.
Okay, so.
So there's a problem.
I move that we amend this, that Rodney Smith be an associate member.
Are you the liaison?
Yeah. Okay, so, okay, so, and Rodney's, okay, so why don't we, I'll read that. Committee appointments, William Alstrom, Tom Gillespie, Betsy Crystal, Mike Perry, and Claire Siska to be full members, and Rodney Smith to be an associate member, Dog Park Committee. Okay, is that, you want to, should we move to approve that one and then go back and approve all the other ones?
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items 12 through 32 with the amendment to item 13.
Second.
Was that Ching Sung? Okay, Katie moved and Ching Sung seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. All right, now back to selectmen's business. We have committee reappointments, and we have a list of all the proposed reappointments, which I assume everybody's looked at and confirmed is correct, or is assuming to be correct. Does anybody want to move to?
I'll make a motion to approve the committee reappointments.
Second.
Katie moves, Joan seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Item seven, parking recommendations, South Acton Train Station Advisory Committee. We have a letter in here from the South Acton Train Station Advisory Committee with their recommendations, and I assume it's just a matter of approving the recommendations. Peter, you're the liaison to this, and I know that David is in the audience if we have any further questions or comments.
Yeah, I mean, I, these are things we've talked about for a while, and I concur with their recommendations. I've seen the construction going on on the former Montori land, which is the first piece of property on the right-hand side, if you're going south on Main Street and you take a right on Maple. It's either Maple or Stowe, I guess, whichever, but it used to be down the hill. That's going to be a new parking space, so the recommendation is to, that's part of the Aspet River Rail Trail, so the recommendation is to split up those spaces to make some available just for rail trail use and the rest for commuters. You know, the Maple Street parking has been an issue. We did raise the parking fines to try to discourage people from parking on Maple Street early in the morning, commuters. This recommendation is that there also be some kind of a resident parking there. I'm not aware that's done anywhere else in town, but SatSec is recommending that we work that out for the Maple Street residents to allow them to park their own vehicles on the street where it would otherwise be prohibited. They're recommending that we continue with the Jones Field parking, that it be reservations and monthly fees paid, and that's the same recommendation for the new spaces that would be on the Montori, the former Montori lot that's being developed by the rail trail. The recommendations for Main Street is essentially that if the town expands the number of parking spaces, there's limited ability to do that because of wetlands and whatnot, but there are plans to do some additions, that they be split 40% for metered spots and 60% for residents, the same ratio that they have now. Recommendation that if River Street ever has a parking lot on at the River Street property, that the selectmen consider allowing resident sticker commuters to use that lot on weekdays, similar to the South Acton Fire Station. So that kind of, my only question would be, when do we expect the rail trail to finish that lot? Do you know, David?
Hi, I'm David Martin. I'm, I live on High Street, and I'm chair of SatSec. The rail trail project is due to be finished next year, by the end of next year. I think it's on track to be earlier than the end of next year. I don't think there's any commitment specifically on the parking lot, any, other than the completion of the project.
Okay, thank you. Well, I support these recommendations and would recommend the selectmen confirm them.
Any questions, comments for the board? Katie?
Peter, David, have these been discussed with the engineering department and the police? I know there's some in here that are recommendations, particularly around the carpool, potential carpooling spots, that you say, you know, if it can be worked out with the police and engineering department, as well as the Maple Street, you know, resident parking kind of proposal.
So to take, to take those in the other order, the Maple Street parking, we want, we felt, it's current practice, we felt we should continue the practice of not allowing commuter parking on Maple Street between 6:00 and 10:00, which effectively prevents all-day commuters.
Right.
But it also prevents the residents from parking in front of their own houses. And we've gotten some comments about that, so we felt that there should be a resident sticker program for the people on Maple Street. It's something for your consideration. The carpool idea is one that came up at the parking forum that we had at the end of April. It is maybe the least expensive way to get additional parking, if you will, because if we could encourage, let's just say, 10% of the main parking lot commuters to have two people per car instead of one, we'd be adding, you know, 25, 26 spaces at no, or 26 commuters at no cost. The issue is to figure out how to do that. And we have spoken with the DPW director, who attends almost all of our meetings, but we'd have to run some kind of experiment, because whether this was enforceable between the police and signage and things like that, SatSec and our meetings felt that we just would make the recommendation and not try to get in between the police department and the DPW department. If they, if they have, you know, you know, we're happy to work with them in anything that they want to do, but this recommendation is just to try and experiment to see if we could get carpools to work, which was, as I mentioned, a recommendation by several people at the parking forum.
Okay. Yeah, no, I think they're interesting ideas. I think my concern is just about kind of what we're approving tonight. If we're sort of approving staff to go forward with looking into these ideas, I think that makes sense, but, you know, again, I think it makes sense to have some sort of option for residents on Maple Street, but just also understanding that that's extra, that staff is going to have to come up with a program and monitor and administer this program and things like that. So I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, we kind of are, if we're approving some of these things, that we're, we are just perhaps approving the recommendations for staff to look into.
So if I can just say, from SatSec's point of view, we are recommending that we actually have a resident sticker program for Maple Street and an experiment for our carpool parking, because we're not sure that it's doable, but we were just wanting to encourage the experiment to see if we can encourage carpools, it would be worth it.
Right, yeah, that's, again, just, I think if we're talking about what kind of motion or thing we're approving tonight, I just make, I would like to make sure it's with the understanding that staff needs to look into doing these, because I, you know, I do have some concerns. And then also just the River Street parking is about something that, you know, might happen. So again, I don't want to necessarily approve something that's, hasn't happened yet and we're not sure if staff has the ability to implement. So those, I think, I think they're great ideas and creative uses to try to work with kind of what we have to improve the situation, for sure. And I have noticed, I have to say, you know, there's so many more people taking the rail shuttle, and I have noticed that for the train I take, that there are, you know, more and more spots that are even not resident spots, but metered spots that are still open closer to that 752 train, which is a big change. And so I think some of the changes we've made in having that commuter shuttle that's becoming much more popular has helped as well. So there are definitely ways to ease the problems, and I like looking into it. I just want to make sure we do it with the acknowledgement that, you know, we're not mandating that these things happen right now, but that they happen with sort of staff cooperation.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I didn't see this as policy. You know, they, SatSec had raised the issue of motorcycle parking and scooter parking, and staff worked with them to come up with a great solution. So I guess I would make a motion that the selectmen ask that these recommendations be passed along to staff for their consideration.
Oh, I like that. Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, yeah, no further discussion. So Peter moved and Katie seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you. And thank you, David, for all your work on this. I know, yeah, there are some things that, obviously, you acknowledge that the resident sticker program might need to be revisited if you find that residents are abusing the privilege. And then I had a question about, okay, well, if parking gets really tight and the bike parking is finished and everything, are people who are commuters going to start parking there, and are they going to be detected, and is it going to become an enforcement issue? But, no, I mean, there are some things that, yeah, obviously are going to have to be sort of monitored.
Right. We didn't make a recommendation at all on the tractor path parking, because it's not intended for use by commuters at all, but that will be an enforcement issue and a signage issue. Whether that has the no parking at 6:00 to 10:00, but that has the problem that no one could take the bike trail 6:00 to 10:00. Right, so, you know, that's a problem. We also just bandied about ideas, you know, you could have limited for four hours, but that also means no one could start their commute there. Like if they worked in Marlboro and they wanted just to park and commute by bicycle to Marlboro, they can't do that. So that, the tractor path parking is going to be a little bit of an issue, I think.
And then the carpooling issue, I just, I think it was maybe in Washington, I think that there were, you have the commuter lanes that you can use on highways, and people were using mannequins and things like that to be able to get into those lanes. Yes, people are very creative, but anyhow, thank you for all of that. So, next item is liaison assignment, 53 River Street Master Plan Committee. I know that Peter has expressed an interest in being liaison. I don't know if anybody else had. If anybody else does, then you can arm wrestle for the privilege, but. Okay, I guess, do we have to formally approve Peter as liaison?
I don't know. I have the only vote on the liaison list. I live in the neighborhood, so it seemed like it.
I'll move to approve Peter as the liaison, the board of selectmen liaison for the 53 River Street Master Planning Committee.
Second.
Okay, Katie moves and Ching Sung second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Congratulations, Peter. All right. RAC draft charge. This represents a substantial rewrite, is based on all the blowback I got at the last time we brought this up. It really is aiming to expand the responsibilities. It still includes an education and public outreach component, but it's about the specific expanded responsibilities, which are general water issues. I don't know if some of the people were concerned that the public outreach and education was going to be about stormwater, because it's a much broader role than just stormwater, which is the public entity's responsibility. But I think that I was also trying to make the responsibilities a little less amorphous than sort of being a voice for water. There are a lot of different components of the different public water issues in our town, and I wanted to sort of make clear, these are items that I have come to know about just in the time that I've been on this board and being liaison to the different committees. I actually saw it, I sent an earlier draft, it was a little bit longer, to the Water District and asked if they could provide input. They basically didn't weigh in on the draft, they just said it would be okay if Matt Mostler were the representative of the Water District on the committee, assuming, because that was one of the provisions, tentative provisions. And then Matt himself, I sat to talk with him about some other things, and he himself suggested some wording changes, and I just went back and I just streamlined it, because that's what I do. But he actually will need to, we need to get his appointment as a Water District rep on this, because his status as a member of RAC has been kind of in question, because when he was originally appointed, he was a resident of Acton, and there was really no, it's not clear to me that he was appointed as a representative of the Water District. That was a side benefit of his being a member. So I think that it was never an issue when he moved out of town. It became an issue more recently, when the committee lost two members last year, and there was, there were insufficient number of people to make a quorum, and then Matt's status became an issue. In any event, but assuming, assuming that we can come to an agreement about this proposal, more or less, then, and we can get it finalized, then I would, at that point, well, I would make sure that his formal appointment gets on the agenda. The VCC is going to have to start recruiting, because the committee is down some members, and I would be prepared to hand over the liaison responsibility to Joan, assuming you are still willing to do that, Joan. And my only other comment here is, I honestly did not, I kept things very general. The one thing that I really don't recommend specifically that RAC be involved in is anything relating to the Nagog Pond litigation, because I'm just concerned that there were some positions taken during the hearing that were pretty, well, they were pretty strongly in support of one perspective, and I don't think that it's, I think that maybe at some point, when new members new members come on board and the committee, you know, you have people who aren't on record with a certain position regarding the Nagog Pond matter, maybe then they can start, you know, they maybe will have more credibility to be able to weigh in on the project and not sound as if they're talking about the same position that they voiced during the hearing. But I think that it's important for the committee to maintain its credibility because it reflects on our credibility. That's my big concern. We're, it's an advisory committee to us and we have, it has to behave in a credible manner because it reflects on us. And if we, if it doesn't happen that way, then it ultimately comes back to bite us. So anyhow, but any comments, questions? Yes?
I had a comment about the membership being five. It seemed potentially low in a thought and then I took Charlie's comment about his concerns from the VCC perspective about if possible language for membership because that makes it difficult on them, which I get. And so I wonder if a way to do this where you can increase membership in terms of people that would be, you know, involved in the committee and supporting the committee and have kind of this representation is to make, some or all of these if possible as liaisons. So if the Acton Water District Commissioner or staff member is a liaison position as opposed to a full voting member, and then I don't know about, you know, Board of Health Conservation Commission or Planning Board as well, but I think that then, you know, gives the opportunity for those, you know, as you mentioned your response to Charlie, the problem is a lot of committees, there's a lot of people that are serving then as members of other committees and there's a pull on people's time and so there's a concern about being able to fill those positions. But what being liaison would allow is then if there is somebody like Matt who is interested and willing to be active, there's a role to be active in that liaison role, but kind of less of a requirement if, say, like, planning boards have a lot of turnover, if they're unable to, you know, kind of field somebody to go to the meetings all the time, you know, and same with these other two boards. But I think making them liaisons might be an interest, you know, a way to kind of deal with Charlie's concerns and then open, increase the potential kind of active participants in the committee. And then there's an extra provide in number two. It says both provide and conduct, well, it just says provide, conduct public workshops under authorized activities.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Takeout. Yeah, exactly. I figured you were making edits. Otherwise, you know, I think, yeah, I think it addressed the concerns I had from the last discussion and I agree that the Nagog issue is really a board issue at this point.
Okay, I have to, I'm trying to, so I would just maybe move if other people agree that these folks should be liaisons, I mean, then.
Yeah, I would support that.
Okay, I can move it.
I would personally say.
Okay, and then, and then I'll just move it, I can move it to the end and just mention them because I think it should be clear. Now, as soon as they're liaison, then these boards will say, well, we don't have to send anybody. But I think that it's important that they be, ideally, I mean, sort of stress that ideally they, these boards and groups should provide liaisons. Anyhow. Yes, Charlie?
Yes, I don't understand your concern about making non-residents full voting members of committees. We have a lot of precedence for that in Acton.
No, sorry, that wasn't my concern.
Well, that, and that was, I mentioned that when Matt was appointed, he was, he was a resident. He wasn't appointed as a Water District rep, you know. Yeah, I understand that we appoint plenty of people who are representatives of different departments and, you know, when we form committees for different purposes, but the concern I have is that, my understanding was he was just appointed as, you know, he was appointed as a member and it wasn't clear to me that he was appointed to represent the Water District.
Yeah, there was a requirement to have a representative from the Water District.
Really?
And he filled it.
In the original charge, really?
Yes.
He was? Okay.
He took James Surratt's place and then they came.
And it was required.
And they said we want somebody else who's in the background that is a resident and I don't.
But now, okay, well, now maybe, I don't know if anybody, board members, you have any other comments before I open it up to audience members? You know, I don't know what, if Katie has just proposed that we make all of these people liaisons, do you, I mean.
Well, you're asking people with the real expertise to be liaisons and have input but not have votes.
That's, I mean, that's the question is that if you.
But, I mean, it seems to me that you want the people with the real expertise to be the voting members of the committee.
But if you have then four members out of five that are representatives of other committees, I think, you know, I worry about that. There's not a lot of.
There's a happy medium, I agree.
And then I also just think there's a lot of concern with getting members of other boards to agree to be voting members sometimes of other boards because they have, you know, I mean, they've got a lot going on. So I think that's why for me a liaison seemed like potentially, maybe the one exception would be Acton Water District because it probably plays the most pertinent role in this. So maybe that one is a member, you know, maybe there's a requirement for a member from Acton Water District and the other ones are liaisons because just knowing some of those committees a bit, they struggle with their own membership.
My experience, Matt showed up for a lot of the meetings and liaisons from the other boards didn't, so.
But I don't know that making them full members really necessarily always makes you show up just because they, then, those positions just often go unfilled and then you have issues with quorum. So I would be supportive if we made the Acton Water District Commissioner, staff member, a member.
Making that a member because it's a water, yeah.
Yeah, and then the other three liaisons.
And, you know, and I think that, I think that it's open, it doesn't have to be Matt, it just has to be a representative of the Water District. So at some point, I, you know, I don't know if the commissioner or commissioner might want to get involved, then that person could take over the responsibility or they could split it or something, but.
I'll wait.
What?
Yeah, the other comment I had is if possible, and you listed members, well, we would need a criteria for that. I mean, do we try for six months and if nobody steps up, we then say it's impossible? Or is it a year or is it?
Well, so that's why we would take those if possible out, make the Acton Water District Commissioner a member.
And then we'll just say that all of these Board of Health Conservation Commission, Planning Board, I was really aiming to make just one position for represented by one of those people, so.
Oh, I see.
But, you know, because people hate serving on other committees, they just do. And so anyhow, Barry, Ron, you have comments?
At the Water District meeting, when your email to the commissioners was discussed, there was some discussion about who should, should the Water District send anybody? And it was back and forth on that and the decision was if anybody goes, it would be Matt. The commissioners decided they, they were not going to get involved, that it would be Matt on a time available basis. And unfortunately, Matt was not there to protect himself, so he got the assis.
Hi, so first of all, thanks for improving the charter. I think it looks very good now. So I agree with Katie on this, that, or also, both points, that I think maybe it would be good to slightly relax. I think the way it's written is sort of fine, but it sort of implies that people should all have credentials and I think it's good if some people have credentials, but we had some really good contributing people who didn't technically have credentials. So I, you know, such as Helen, so that worked, so I think it would be good to encourage general people who are interested in participating is just a point. And the other thing is I've always felt a little uncomfortable about people with their double duty, feeling like they had to come all the time. And so that is an issue. I think the goal is not to burn people out by being on too many committees and if they want to come, they can come. But I think that was the issue. We had a lot of liaison people who just never showed up and then that created quorum problems, just like you said, Katie. So anyway, those are, but other than that, I think it's fine, it's good.
Thank you. I think it's also had to do with the fact that it was a stormwater bylaw drafting and people were just sick to death of that.
Ted Frederick, West Acton. I want to thank you again also for the improved charge. It's going to make it a lot easier to recruit people, hopefully to get some of the people that were excited about it before the other charge, so I just want to thank you for that. I also support Katie's idea. Although I love the idea of lots of experts and lots of people from other boards, the voices of the people out here are just as important and I feel like it needs to be a majority of the people that aren't necessarily tied into other committees because these opinions are important, that if we have experts that can explain things, which I believe they should, per our constitution laws are supposed to be understandable by the average man, average person, and that explaining to Helen would bring the issues to light that even I, with an engineering degree, didn't understand. So as you're explaining to the regular person, you start to understand what the issues really are. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? All right. What I propose to do, I need to talk to you a little bit about your suggestions here, but I mean, what I would propose to do is I could make a few revisions in accordance with the comments today and then my aim would be to have it, just, yeah, just to have it on a consent agenda and finalize it. And in the meantime, I will, I think that we need to, at some point, if we can't do it now, can we, can we squeeze changing the liaison to Joan or do we have to put that on a new agenda? Okay, okay.
I feel like you should probably, just because we just voted Peter that a liaison seems we're taking votes, since we're not doing the charge until next time, why don't we just put that as consent too and then? We don't have any concerns.
I'm just a little freaking out right now because I've got so many things to worry about, but no, I'll take care of the charge and then, and then we'll get it on the next agenda for consent and we'll also get Joan formally instated as the new liaison and we'll go on from there, so. All right, so next item is ratify goals. Are we assigning people to be responsible for them or just ratifying them? I don't know that it necessarily works very well for us to assign people because we end up working on whatever anyway.
Then I'll make a motion to ratify the selectmen's goals per the memo in our packet.
Second.
Is that you, Ching Sung? Okay, Katie moved and Ching Sung second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining?
I did want to bring up one thing and I guess we can bring it up on another agenda is just around the townwide sustainability policy because I sent my report before, I had the meeting on Thursday night with Deborah and Jim, but we just talked about, just because we've been working on some of these issues about a potential kind of plan for developing a sustainability policy, so I'll write something up maybe that we can just discuss at our next meeting, just to get input or buy-in from everybody on a general plan for developing a sustainability policy.
Do you want that on the next?
Yeah, I got till July 10th, yeah. It will just be very short, it should be, it doesn't need to be a presentation. I'll just write up kind of what we talked about and as long as people are on board, we'll move forward with that kind of plan that we had discussed, which mostly involves them doing the work, so I don't think anybody should be too mad.
Mr. Manager, you're off the hook. We're going to turn to the Town Manager Search Committee overview, but thank you very much. All right. Yeah, I spent some time going through, Nancy Tavernier was one of the co-clerks on the 2007 committee and of course, being the thorough person she is, she had electronic files from that committee, so I got them all from her and I spent some time going through them. I also got some documents from Peter Ashton, who was chairman. And so what I provided here is just two documents pertaining to the 2017 committee. It borrows heavily from the 2007 process with some changes. I tried to streamline the charge, but one of the things that I wanted to address with everybody is the formation of the committee, the membership. The way it worked in 2007 was that I think Dory Hunter and Peter Ashton, well, I don't know how Peter Ashton got picked to be the chairman, but he knew he was going to be the chairman, I think, before they knew who the members would be. And he and I think Dory kind of conferred and he conferred with other members on the Board of Selectmen. He was, he had just stepped down from the board about good candidates and then they just, they picked people. And I was very uncomfortable with that. I mean, obviously, there are people who have already come to talk to me about it, but, you know, and that's fine, but I would rather have input from the rest of the board. It can't be a completely, you know, we're not going to go through the VCC and that, we just don't have time to do that. It would take, you know, forever and a day for us to get through this, but I want to have more input from other people. And so what my thought is, because I would like to get this committee organized and at least know who they are and they can, you know, they don't have to meet during the summer, but, you know, August or something maybe, or before they go off on vacation, they could at least be starting to think about these things or have piled material to process about how they're going to work, organize things. But I guess I would like to get, and I'm assuming this is okay under open meeting law, there's no deliberation, I'd just like to get from each selectman suggestions of people and I put down some of the credentials. I mean, I basically want people who are going to be prepared to work very hard, they're organized, they're time sensitive, they're going to be collaborative. I don't want people having pissing matches at these meetings. They have to be able to work together and I'm anticipating that there are going to be differences of opinion and they have to be able to reach some sort of, they have to be adults, okay? Because even though we have a lot more time to work on this than the 2017 team did, it's still, it's a lot of work. And I am, as you saw in the little timeline, I'm sort of contemplating January, February, we're going to be screening the final, the final candidates because I want to avoid kind of encroaching on our time to get ready for town meeting, so. Do you want us to have talked to people beforehand to kind of ensure that they would be interested if we put their name forward or do you want us to send suggestions and then you'd kind of follow up with them? Yeah, and I'm anticipating, what I'm expecting is that I'm probably going to know a lot of people and there probably will be overlap, but I think what I would like to do is just see, you know, have you send names and then at the next meeting, just talk, you know, just talk about the names that you've given and then, you know, maybe that point we could just go and talk to these individuals. And, you know, I'm hoping that maybe we'll have more names than we need and then we can just sort of whittle it down. It would be great, the committee in 2007 was 13 people, which is kind of big. I think that the good aspect of having a big committee is that if people are traveling, they can't show, you know, then you have enough people to do the work, but I think ideally, I would like to have a somewhat smaller committee, but at the same time, if there's just some really, really good people, you know, I'd rather include them, especially if they're worker bees, you know, it's just that this, I just provided you with, well, you saw the final memo with the recommended finalists in 2007. I mean, there's just incredible amount of work in that. I'm sure Peter Ashton had a lot to do with some of that, you know, but they have so many people on that, on that committee who are capable of amassing information like that and putting out a nice report and, you know, I would like to replicate that, so. But that's what I would like you to do and from now until, you know, the next meeting, you can just, if you have some really, really good prospects, then, you know, probably, I've thought of some of them myself, but I like to hear who they are and we'll just, I'll aggregate a list and then, and if I, if I perchance don't have a clue who some of the people are, I probably will ask, but anyhow. But the idea is, as you saw also, the membership, no active board members, that was the way they did it the last time and I talked with Peter Ashton about this and I think the idea is that the active board is going to get, you know, the big bite of the apple then we're going to get to screen the finalists and we have to pick and then we have to negotiate with whoever gets, we make an offer to, so. And I think it's better, it's more inclusive to have us out of the mix of people who are doing the preliminary screening of candidates, so. And the other thing that I have, I don't think they used a consultant in 2007, they talked about and they decided not to, but I'm realistic, you know, I know that there's a lot of work involved and for things like just guidance, general guidance and posting, there might be times when they want a consultant involved to deal with. it, it, there might be times when they want a consultant involved to deal with a lot of the paperwork, just to keep track of the, the applications and things like that. And I think the other thing is that it would be good if, you saw in the, the final memo to the Board of Selectmen in 2007, there who were the members. So it would be good to have one or two people who, who've been through this before, especially the ones who did all the work, but, and I'm not sure who they were, but anyhow, that's, any questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed some, something, I was talking to Charlie Ernstson, but you, you looking for names from us, is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, and I, yeah, I've got the, you know, I've got what I'm looking for. I really am looking for people who are going to be workhorses, you know, and I just, and people have to, they have to be perfect, basically. They have to be able to work hard, really be organized and, and also be able to collaborate, you know. I mean, I'm expecting that there will be differences of opinion, but the people have to be adults. I mean, because you can't have the committee lapse into dysfunction and not be able to complete its, you know, its task.
Okay, so we're just supposed to get you names of people we think, we, we just know and think highly of?
Yeah, people, and, yeah, and, you know, preferably not 20 people, but, you know, be, be selective. And then what I'll do is just aggregate them and, and I'll, we'll talk about it at the next meeting. But I, I'd like to, yeah, I don't want this to get bogged down and, and that's why this is, you know, this is involving us. I feel that's democratic enough. I didn't, I certainly didn't want to do this by myself. And the other thing we need to do is we need to pick a chairman. And the chairman obviously has to have, have pretty strong skills, you know, because they, a person has to, we're not going to be picking cats that need herding, but, you know, the person needs to be able to maintain order and stick to the deadline. So that is something that I think, and then, and then, and then we can finalize the charge, okay? And then send them on their way. There is one issue, I think Barry weighed in on, it has to do with including a Selectman in the, the executive discussion about post, post-interview about candidates. And that actually, we're, I'm waiting for council to weigh in on that because there may be an issue with having, because we're subject as Selectmen to all kinds of requirements that we do things openly. And so the, the, the things for which we can go into executive session are, are more restrictive. And I, there, I looked at one of the provisions in, in the open meeting law about interviewing people and I'm wondering if even the proposed two-step screening process that, that they used in 2007 would pass muster even for the, the people who are on the committee, because it looked like you can have one round of preliminary screening in executive session. And I thought, well, what about more if you have a second round, which is, could be likely? So anyhow, we're going to get a little more guidance from council about that, so.
One suggestion I had or a question, and like you said, we can finalize the charge later, and I don't know that this necessarily even needs to be in the charge and maybe it's something discussed with whoever's the future chair, but it had in there in one of the administrative matters that the committee chairman assigns each candidate a code number, but it seems like the committee members still know the names and everything of the applications when they get, when they get the initial applications. And I thought that, I wanted to suggest that at, that perhaps only the chairman knows the names and that we remove all of that information. Again, through Googling and things, you could probably figure out who people are, but just in terms of removing names and addresses and stuff, I think it helps with implicit bias issues. So when they're doing that initial review of applications and deciding who to bring in for interviews, I think it would be helpful not to have identifying information as part of that, yeah, and just to have the code name, code numbers there. And then obviously, once they bring them into interview, they would, you know, know who they are. So that was just one suggestion I had, but otherwise, I, I liked it and I thought it seems, obviously, the, the process was successful last time around. We ended up with a very good town manager, so I think it makes sense to kind of hew pretty closely to the glasses from the last go around, but with some cleanup.
Why reinvest the wheel?
Right, exactly.
You know, we can just fine tune this and, you know, with any luck at all, we won't get too good at this, you know, because we'll have a, a town manager for a while. But, all right, that's, yeah, I, I wasn't, that's a detail I don't really, I know that in the files I was looking at, there were just some pages that just had code numbers and code letters and numbers and all that and, and I didn't know who it was that was keeping track of what they, who they were attached to, assume it was Peter as a chairman. But, you know, that, that's why it, you know, it would be helpful to have the membership include some people who have experience with the prior, the prior activity, so. Questions, any other comments? Mr. Noon?
I have nothing to say.
Are you, are you the new liaison to the Board of Selectmen?
No, Dom told me about five o'clock today that I didn't have any liaison for Selectmen.
And you're so glad, well, see, this is 9:30, we're, we're done. Yeah. But I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Katie moves, Joan seconds. Any discussion? No? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, abstaining. Thank you.